All right, welcome everyone. I call the call to order. The Bothell regular city council meeting for June 1st, 2021. If you would please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance with me. We will unmute your microphones and turn off your video. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. That will be so much better once we're in person again. All right, before moving on to the meeting agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings is still in effect. Therefore, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed, both in writing or verbally. Sign up sheets were provided by the city's city clerk's office via links from the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in and by phone and listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as not to interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, their connection will be terminated. For our phone and callers during staff presentation, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so everyone can follow along. At this point, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the city council members by position number. Please say here when the city clerk calls your name.
Thank you, Mayor Olson. Deputy Mayor is orange. Councilmember Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember McCullough?
Yeah.
Councilmember McNeil?
Here.
Mayor Olson?
Here.
Councilmember Dore?
Here.
Councilmember Agnew?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. And lastly, before we begin, I'd like to read it, reiterate some of the meeting guidelines. Speak clearly and pause frequently. Mute your microphone when not speaking. At the appropriate times. So for council members, if you'd like to speak, please hold up the yellow card in the lower portion of your screen. This will help prevent two people from speaking at the same time. All right, on to meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to the to tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to public engagement opportunities. All right, so we have pollinator week, June 21st through the 27th. Pollinators like bees, butterflies and bats provide one out of every three bites of food we eat. Learn how you can help them thrive, then take a pollinator pop quiz. More at the www.bothelwa.gov/pollinators. And then we have the waste mobile in Bothell, June 25th to 26th and the 27th. At Uda Bothell from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM each day. Safely dispose of household hazardous waste products like pesticides, batteries, propane tanks and more. It's free of charge. More at kingcountyhaswaste.gov/housholds. All right, we have our first proclamation tonight or our proclamation tonight for Pride Month. So for Pride Month, whereas the month of June is designated Pride Month to honor and celebrate our lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex and asexual family, friends, neighbors and coworkers. And whereas we commemorate the June 1969 Stonewall riots that resulted from ongoing harassment of New York's trans and queer community by the New York police. And whereas the Stonewall riots served as a catalyst for the LGBTQIA rights movement, leading to the establishment of safe places for people to express sexual orientation and gender expression without fear and landmark changes in public state policy to protect the civil rights of all peoples. And whereas further progress is needed to ensure these protections remain for all members of the LGBTQIA community, yet we celebrate the substantial gains that have been achieved. And whereas in solidarity with the LGBTQIA community, the Bothell City Council affirms the city's commitment to protect and serve everyone who resides in, works in, studies in or visits Bothell without discrimination. Now therefore, I Liam Olson, Mayor of the City of Bothell, encourage all community members to join us in this special observation observance and hereby proclaim June 2021 as Pride Month in the City of Bothell. And I do believe we had Ginger here to accept and to say a few words.
Thank you, and I want to extend my appreciation to the City of Bothell for this proclamation. I'm here to represent two organizations. PFLAG, which is a group dedicated to supporting building of stronger and caring families, especially for LGBTQ youth. And I'm also here to represent Eastside Pride, a community-led organization that seeks to establish an eastside-wide festival, bringing it together all of the communities of the east side in their own celebration of pride. I'm going to keep this brief, but what I want to acknowledge is that symbols really matter, especially to those who have felt left out or excluded. My parents moved to the east side when it was not legal for them to own a home in many neighborhoods. And for me, growing up on the east side as beautiful and as vibrant and as economically energetic as those communities were, it was also a place where it was impossible for me, someone who felt different in my identity and gender from a really young age to think that there would be a possibility for me. Only later did I even discover there were words for who I was. I am an Asian transgender woman, a child of immigrants. And only recently have I even been able to describe that to people. Those kinds of symbols of language matter and a proclamation is an equally important symbol for the kids that we see going to school and coming home terrified from a place that they should feel safe and welcome. For the young adults that we work with, those who go to work and have to experience the locker room talk. And for the parents who are struggling to reconcile what they grew up learning about what boys and girls were supposed to be and the loving parents that they so desperately want to be. What we've learned is that community and acceptance is what brings people together. It's what brings out the greatest potential and the hopes of those who have ever felt excluded or left out. Those kinds of symbols matter and the proclamation is quite literally a life-saving document for so many LGBTQ youth and adults as well. It doesn't stop at symbols, which is why Eastside Pride exists. PFLAG continues to do our family building work to create loving families and communities. And Eastside Pride is on its way to launching its soft online presence in conjunction with Seattle Pride at the end of this month with the hopes of being a community-wide festival next year that fosters unity, celebrates diversity and builds bridges across communities. So thank you and congratulations.
Well, thank you very much in saying a few words. I appreciate your time and all of your work. All right, our next item we have today is a special presentation, King County Health Through Housing. I believe we have Kelly Ryder with the King County Department of Community and Health Services.
Hi there, thank you, Mayor. And I'm actually joined tonight, if I may, by Leo Flor, my Director of the King County Department of Community and Human Services. And so if we can, we will go ahead and share our PowerPoint slides. I'm sorry, I've been out for a couple of days over the Memorial Day weekend, so I'm sorry we didn't get this to you ahead of time. But if it works for you, we can just dive right in.
There we go.
All right, apologize for that delay. I was looking for my unmute button with the slides up. Good evening, I am joined by Kelly and my name is Leo Flor and I have the privilege of directing King County's Department of Community and Human Services. And Kelly is our outstanding government relations manager. And our goal tonight is to provide an informational briefing to the Bothell City Council. Thank you for having us, Mr. Mayor, on the Health Through Housing Initiative. The Health Through Housing Initiative is a name that we've given to the imposition at King County of a sales tax, a one-tenth of one cent sales tax, the authority of which came from the state. The county council enacted the sales tax last year in the fall and the county began collecting the sales tax revenue this year. We estimate that it'll collect about $50 million a year. And the goal of the program that we're moving forward on now and this may be the first time that we've been able to brief all of you except for Councilmember McNeil, who is a member of the Regional Policy Committee and has seen some of this information in the past. I'll ask him to correct me if I get anything wrong on the presentation and as we go. But our goal is knowing that we have a significant issue in our community and across our region with homelessness, with unsheltered homelessness in particular. And then within unsheltered homelessness, there's really a group of folks who experience what we call chronic homelessness. And people experiencing chronic homelessness have lived outside for at least a year or have lived outside for three times or more in the last year and will have a disabling condition. That's sort of the legal definition that we're working with. We'll talk about that more in a moment. But this is a group of folks that have been living outside for a long time and before the COVID pandemic took hold in our region, we estimate that we had at least 4,500 people who met this definition in King County. And over the last year, we have every reason to believe that more people have fallen into homelessness and in chronic homelessness. And it's really in that context where both the data, but I think people's everyday experience right now shows that homelessness is an issue that will continue to grow in our community absent some bold action. And we do hope that what we're presenting today is part of that bold action that we as a community can take. So the concept has a couple of components, but I'll summarize them here really quickly. One, you may have seen in the news that King County has been doing some work to figure out how hotels can operate as a place for a unsheltered person to live. So one thing we're looking at is how can we buy more of these single-room settings? They can be hotels, they could also be nursing homes. We recently were able to work with the City of Shoreline in acquiring a nursing home and putting it into service as emergency shelter. Or it could be an apartment building that would be coming online but might not want to go into open rent. But anything that's a single-room setting. The next part of the program is the thing that can sometimes be frustrating with housing, although it just takes a while, is you have to build it. And meanwhile, we have an issue in our community now. And so we are interested in finding things that we can put into immediate service as emergency housing to get folks inside. But then over the long term, be able to convert them into permanent supportive housing, which is that fourth bullet. And then the third thing that I wanted to point out here that is a question we get quite a lot and I think is really an important part of this program is it is uncommon to be able to both acquire something and then know that we have the funds to operate it over time. It's one of our big sort of technical challenges. And this program is different in that it contains the funding both to acquire properties and to operate them in perpetuity, providing the onsite services that we know are important. So that we're not just getting folks inside, but we're supporting them once they're inside so that as many of them as possible can move on to an additional form of housing as it's available. So a couple of our premises. First, housing is effective. If you're really into homelessness and affordable housing issues, you'll have noticed that there's a series or parade of studies that have sort of come out both locally and nationally over the last 10 years. There is not a single one of them that does not arrive at this conclusion that housing is ultimately the solution to bringing unsheltered folks inside, whether it's the creation of more of it, the right kind of it. And this is something that we proved over the pandemic is that when you get people inside and you get them into a situation that starts to look like housing, people get healthier in addition to stopping the spread of disease. And this brings us to our second point, which is single-room housing in particular is healthier. We started this work with hotels about a year ago now, a little bit more than a year ago, where we had a number of shelters across the county where people slept six inches apart from each other. And our goal as a community for a long time has been, how many people can you fit into as few shelters as possible in order to sort of maximize the efficiency of the space? What we found is that not only was that a dangerous condition, it ended up being the perfect condition for a disease to be able to spread in. It was also not a set of conditions that was particularly effective for people experiencing homelessness to be able to get better and to move on. But we have now found that single-room housing is more effective as an intervention and healthier. This is also about stewardship. Housing can be expensive. I'll also say that it is cheaper than a lot of the other ways that we care for the population experiencing chronic homelessness in our community right now. Many of these folks end up receiving their healthcare in jails, in emergency rooms. And those are both more expensive and less effective. We have an opportunity here to create housing to and to do it through acquisition during a temporary condition of the economy that is allowing us to be able to identify hotels, purchase them and get an average of $200,000 per unit acquisition cost. And for comparison, although I want to be clear that emergency housing, I don't think it is a directly comparable thing to permanent supportive housing, but the creation of a newly constructed unit can often cost $300,000 or $400,000. That's going to be the right way to go in some cases, but if we can acquire a lot of emergency shelter in the meantime at $200,000 a room, that's a matter of stewardship from our perspective to be able to make these resources go further in a short time. And then the last of our themes is really a recognition that the county must work with cities in a collaborative way. The, we've had a lot of success over the last couple of months, working with cities across the region. And the premise here is that we're not going to seek a hotel in a city without that city having understood what we are proposing and then giving us a green light, as you'll see in another slide, to come into that city and to begin to look. So just a recognition that we are not now in a situation with COVID where we must act, you know, within days in order to to prevent the spread of disease, which was the context for some of our earlier hotel leases at the beginning of the pandemic. And this is still a crisis. And our ability to act together is something that we're really excited about so that we can get to that scale of impact that will prevent the homelessness crisis from growing as we are certain it will unless we're able to muster collective action. And then why this approach, I've sort of hit on this already. It is an urgent situation and I think again, both the data and our daily experience tell us that. As elected officials, I'm certain that you hear about that as well. And the thing that I think sometimes we miss in homelessness solutions is that we know what works. This is not something where there's a lot of controversy again around whether housing is an effective intervention. We know that it is. But for folks who might be interested in how hotels specifically or other single-room settings can work as a solution to folks experiencing chronic homelessness. The University of Washington studied that over the last year and came to a conclusion that this was an effective intervention. And we've shared that that link here. I'd like to now turn it over to Kelly to talk some more about the way that the initiative has taken shape and what we're doing now.
Thank you. And so as I mentioned, we will make sure that you get these slides in particular because they include some handy links for anybody looking to do their own research. This has several links that point you to the legislation that has brought us to the implementation of the Health Through Housing Initiative. And so just going back in history for everyone's recall, the first step that we were on this road was in 2020 of last year, the legislature passed House Bill 1590 that officially gave King County and other governments the ability to pass a council manic one-tenth of 1% sales tax. Last September, the executive proposed a budget that implemented that sales tax under ordinance 19179. At the proposal of that, then eight cities across King County decided to implement this sales tax on their own. And so in eight cities across King County, they are collecting this one-tenth of 1% sales tax. That revenue only goes to them. And in the rest of the county, including in the City of Bothell, the revenue for that one-tenth of 1% comes to the King County government for our use in the Health Through Housing Initiative. In November, the county council fully adopted their budget for the biennium. And in that budget, they gave King County, the Department of Community and Human Services, the appropriation authority to begin acquiring and operating health through housing buildings. And so we now have the ability to bond against that revenue stream and to be able to begin acquiring. A few weeks ago, the executive announced the first acquisition of those in Queen Anne for us to begin that health through housing portfolio. And we are continuing to be in conversations with cities in northeast, south King County, in addition to the City of Seattle about acquiring these and have certainly heard from the cities that we've been talking to the importance of making sure we have regional distribution of those sites. In February, the King County Council, in coordination with the Regional Policy Committee, then adopted ordinance 19236. And so Councilmember McNeil was part of those discussions that created a framework for an implementation plan and really gave us the full direction that the Health Through Housing Initiative would focus on a specific population and be able to really prioritize the type of work that Leo's been talking about. This spring, then, we went to the legislature and asked for clarification that original House Bill 1590 did not explicitly speak to acquisition. It was adopted in a very different climate, shall we say, pre-pandemic. And so we were able to get this, the state legislature and the governor to adopt House Bill 1070. And we now have full ability to acquire with that sales tax fund. And so that is what we are charging ahead to do. In August, then, just last step for now, in our legislative timeframe, we will deliver the executive and Department of Community and Human Services a proposed implementation plan for a longer stretch of time as to how we intend to use those sales tax revenues. Again, that implementation plan will go to the Regional Policy Committee in addition to the county council. But we are continuing to work on that priority as established by the implementation plan framework and continue to be able to look to acquire buildings. So we'll go to the next slide then and just give you a couple more details of what we're looking to do. Who will be served? Leo spoke to the priority for folks experiencing chronic homelessness. It really comes in two pieces. One is a prioritized income. But really, we know that the population we are looking to prioritize, regardless of income, always ends up falling below that 30% area median income level. And that is those folks experiencing chronic homelessness or at risk of chronic homelessness. And so as Leo said, those populations have a disabling condition, maybe physical behavioral health or developmental disability. And then they have a specific definition for how long they have experienced homelessness. They have been homeless for at least a year consecutively or cumulative 12 months over the previous three years. And then we've also made a little bit of leeway for folks that might be at risk of chronic homelessness. This is really our work to try to make sure that we're not pushing people off of support just because they've been homeless for only 11 months and 29 days. And so folks that have been homeless for 10 to 12 months in the previous 12 years, folks that have been homeless for 12 months in the last five years are also eligible. And then with those populations, we're really working to focus on those populations disproportionately impacted by homelessness. We know that people of color are disproportionately impacted as well as people that have really been engaged deeply in some of our most intensive systems, criminal justice systems, as well as behavioral health systems. And making sure that, as Leo said, we get them into stable housing where they are more successful and we can have better success for the community. On this next slide, then, you will see a little bit more detail as we begin to focus on really what are we looking for in communities. The buildings that we are looking to acquire are really in the 75 to 150 unit size. We've had a couple of buildings that we have looked at, just a little short of 75 units. So what we really like to say is for communities looking to partner with us on a health through housing building, we want to be as flexible as possible. What we are looking at is what service providers have told us it takes to be successful with a building and to be efficient. And so we want to make sure we have a certain scale of population that we're serving in that building. We also want to make sure that we don't have too big of a building because we know that too intensive of a density of these buildings isn't successful for individuals that are residing there either. So 75 to 150 units, units with that private bedroom and bathroom. We have heard so many stories over the last year of the importance of that ability to lock a door, to sleep in your own bed night after night and to be able to use the bathroom by yourself. And so that's really what we're going for. Recent construction, 1990 and later, really, we're looking for buildings that need minimal rehab as we move in. We're going to need to do a little bit of work over time as we look to hotel units that really weren't made to be permanent housing, making sure that they kind of are adjusted to have a kitchen facility and really are able to be stable long-term. But in the get-go, as Leo said, trying to move folks in as quickly as possible, trying to get a building that is up to date enough that we're not going to be able to have intense, we're not going to need to have intensive construction from day one. Internal corridors then has become most of the, one of the most important things that we've heard from service providers and also one of the biggest challenges for some of our folks looking to identify hotels. Many of our hotels around the region do have external stairways, external doorways. And what our service providers like Catholic Community Services, Plymouth Housing Group have told us is they really need those internal corridors in order to be able to support the safety and well-being of the residents. We need it to be zoned for healthier housing use or at least be able to work with cities long-term to make sure that we can get that permit and get folks housed as quickly as possible. And then we're going to have folks with disabilities in these buildings. We know that not every room is going to be ADA accessible, but really making sure that there is an elevator and there's a certain framework for support of the population that's going to live there. And then lastly, for my purposes, Health Through Housing will fund a variety of the costs that need to go into making these buildings successful. And this is one of the things that is most important to me, having to work in housing for a little over 10 years now. This is the only revenue source that I know of that funds both the capital costs, operating costs and services costs. And as Leo said, the services have been really important when we've talked to communities across the region. We are really excited that this sustainable funding source that does not need to be renewed is going to make sure that we can make a commitment to communities when we buy a building, that we will fully fund that building and be able to make sure that the services onsite can support the well-being of the residents and the community. And so the funding source will acquire the building. It will operate the building and so making sure that long-term maintenance is done. And then also 24/7 staffing, so making sure that if there is an emergency in the middle of the night, if there is a need that a neighbor needs to call on, that staffing will be there in present 24/7. And lastly, our case management services. And so we will have service providers that are there working with the residents. It really is a proactive and voluntary service package that covers all of the variety of needs our residents might need. And so for folks that may need to get connected with entitlement services or health insurance, getting them on Medicaid, getting them on social security disability, making sure that they have those sorts of supports to be able to connect with physical and mental health care. physical and mental health care if they need to. Next, making sure that any other kind of daily living services can also be supportive. And so if folks need a little bit of support with how to get their dietary needs met or being able to work on how to maintain their home over time, they can get those types of services. And then finally, being able to work on kind of long term goals for the residents. And so if that is employment, if that is a certain level of stability, whatever that is, really having the services to make sure that residents can meet their goals over time for what it takes for them to be thriving and healthy in our community. And then really looking for that conversion to permanent supportive housing over time, not what we're needing to do right at the get go. But we know over time, we're going to need to make these fully functioning housing units in order to give the residents the best support. So that is the package that we intend to fund, and I will kick it over to Leo for this last slide.
Thank you, Kelly. So Mr. Mayor and and members of the council, just so that we are not being shy, in addition to providing you with information about the Health Through Housing Initiative, we do seek a potential partnership with the city of Bothell. This slide really depicts the sort of stages that that could go in. I don't think that this is as simple as, yes, let's, let's have a health through housing building anywhere. From our perspective as a county, we are really starting with the, you know, agreement to come in to a city looking to see if there are properties that are appropriate. Kelly described the types of properties. I think the other thing that makes a property appropriate is that the city agrees that it is an appropriate property. I can say that with several of the cities with which we are currently working on some stage of of this progression where a city says that's not a property we would support. That's where that conversation has stopped. And I want to acknowledge that that's a little bit different, and I think an important potential model for us working together. The other thing that's been really encouraging is is for cities to be able to say, and these are places where it could work for us, and these are buildings that we would support further exploration. But first, it's let's find if there are any. Let's, we would propose to connect staff within your your human services staff with our team to start to sketch out details that would be important to the city. If something were to go forward. And then if we were to identify a site, and then it seemed like we had the the contours of a program as our staff connected, we're now on our purple circle here. We would then come back to city leadership, identify a particular property, identify a particular concept. And then if that purple circle passes muster with everybody, the county would seek to go into ownership itself to purchase a facility and then begin community conversations about that as well. So one of our specific asks and cities have entertained this in a number of different ways is whether you'd allow us in partnership to start on this sort of red, green, purple, I guess it's teal sequence, if this is something that the city would support. And because it's probably not as easy as us just making a presentation, we'd be happy to answer any questions you might have that could inform current or future decision making.
Councilmember Doer.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation, Leo and Kelly. It just seems so obvious. It makes me wonder why we didn't think of it sooner. I guess COVID has its has its plus side. So we don't have any human services staff. We have a budget for human services grants, but the council has a subcommittee that awards those grants or decides how to award those grants. So I'm not sure what would work in lieu of human services staff, but I can't imagine anyone would be against seeing if there is property available in Bothell that would help with this cause.
If it's helpful, council member, I think we'll work with anybody identified for us. In some cities, we've worked with city manager, city administrator teams. And we also now have, I think, a couple of emerging patterns from other cities that we'd be happy to share as starting points with anybody there she might identify.
Okay. I don't know if we have to talk, I guess we have to talk about as a council in terms of our level of support and if there are enough council members, but maybe we can talk about that later during council conversations.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. You've got two so far, because I am completely in support of doing this here. I think it seems like the most obvious thing in the world that if somebody has a problem that they lack housing, the best thing we can do to help them solve their problem is to provide housing. And any way that we can help that, any way that we can be a friend to you and the work that you do, I would fully support us doing. And thank you for the work that you do.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. And my question is about the services onsite 24/7 that that people need. So they're going into their own room. But I recall that there is also many houses or small sheds, other things where they didn't quite receive the services and so they weren't able to, I guess, adapt. So on the street, they have freedom to do whatever they want. Once they go into this housing community, there are rules and there are needs. How do you really address that? I guess that's my big question.
Thank you, council member. One, just to services, as Kelly mentioned, in the universe of housing, this, I think, is the most comprehensive funding source that we have available to us. And so unlike many other endeavors where we, we call it stacking different capital sources and then sort of knitting together operations and services, we have planned this so that we will acquire no more units than we can support with the 24/7 service package that Kelly described. I think another really important part of this, and we've not said this explicitly, is is the buildings will be owned by King County but operated by organizations that really have deep expertise in the provision of permanent supportive housing. And so they, they in many cases will be a Medicaid funded behavioral health provider. We know that behavioral health is a critical service to be able to provide and make available to folks, and we know that it works best when it's immediately available or available on demand. And that's one of the things that we're really excited about with Health Through Housing. Another thing that I think is relevant as we take a look at what we think is one of the most service rich packages initiatives that we have for people experiencing homelessness is that the Department of Community and Human Services is actually the administrator for this, for the county's Medicaid funded behavioral health system. And so an advantage of us being in ownership of the property is the ability to bring in our behavioral health programs that we also administer and to blend them together to synchronize them in a more deliberate way. And the model, and I won't go into too much detail, although I'm happy to go into as much detail as you like. The model where we've really tested this recently is actually our isolation and quarantine facilities. Our department has the privilege of working with public health to operate the isolation and quarantine facilities in King County. And what we've really learned is that if you get the right level of behavioral health services onsite, you get the right level of physical healthcare services onsite. And then you get people into settings where, again, they're able to use the bathroom, they're able to sleep, they're able to take showers. The transformation that you see even in a two week stay in isolation quarantine is remarkable. And then what we saw from the University of Washington studies, when you begin to extend that over months, we had a number of of caseworkers, in this case with the Downtown Emergency Services Center, who said they physically couldn't recognize their clients that they'd been serving for years. That's the level of change that happened when people had access to good food, good sleep, good hygiene, and good healthcare.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Well, Leo and Kelly, thank you very much for this presentation. I have some thoughts and some questions. One thing that I have heard from boots on the ground is that 30 day treatments are, for the most part, epic failures. And so what I'm hearing from you is that people can have their sense of privacy and safety and still have as much time as they need to get their behavioral health therapy treatments where they're ready to be independent. Am I understanding that right? There's no clock ticking on them while they're in the housing?
That's correct. We'll certainly encourage and support folks in moving on when they're ready. And we won't have an arbitrary cutoff date and say, if you're not by here, by this date, you're back out again.
Right. Well, I find that piece very, very encouraging because I hear that that's where this cycle just keeps is rinse, repeat, rinse, repeat, and it's, and and it's not getting better. So that that part was really encouraging. And then the other part that I was thinking, just thinking about different personality types that, you know, having your own space is great. But, you know, for some of the introverts, they need to be and introverts are great. They're very deep thinkers, need to be pulled out. And I'm, it sounds like that there is that proactive piece of pulling people out and getting them engaged. And so my brain started to rabbit trail. Are we stuck at, what was the number, 75 to 150 units for economic reasons? Or would you, would you be willing to scale it down where it's more of a home type setting?
Thank you, Madam Deputy Mayor. We, so 75 to 150 is a sort of planning factor for us. And you are correct that it is really tied to an economy of scale at the provider level to staff for, you know, 75 folks is about the same as it would cost to staff for 30 folks. We are, I think, very flexible, particularly, you know, the scale of 150 might not be right for every city. I think when we start to get into like the teens, like home size settings, the economies of scale do get very difficult. But if we're in that sort of, and I'm not saying a specific floor, like below this number, we wouldn't entertain it. I think when we start to get into the sort of 50s and below, the economics start to lose some of their power. And we are not going to be dogmatic about that at King County. And if there's a, you know, if in Bothell, there's a particular property that would work and it's close on size, our goal is going to be to have a conversation about what could work as opposed to, that doesn't fit the model, so we're walking away.
Are there other team then? In other words, are there other team members that can come in and come alongside and help make it work? I'm guessing that would be part of that conversation.
Absolutely.
Okay, so here's my last question, then I'm going to yield the floor to to somebody else. King, we overlap two counties. We go into Snohomish County. So on the King County piece, there may, I'm just speaking theoretically, there may not be a building that would yield itself to this. But over on Snohomish, our Snohomish County side, there might be the perfect piece. So if you had experience with cities that are bordered up against or overlap into other counties and working collaboratively with the neighboring county on properties?
We have made an assumption, so to the last part of your question, not extensively. We have made an assumption that we would purchase within King County using King County revenue. I'm also a person who never says never. So particularly if another county might want to help bear costs so that we might be able to enter into a joint project, I don't think we would, you know, say no out of hand. But we have not had any conversations with Snohomish County, for example.
So the trail has yet to be blazed, is what you're telling me. Okay.
That is a wonderful way to say it, Madam Deputy Mayor.
Well, thank, thank you. Thank you for answering my questions. That helps.
Councilmember Agnew.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. It was enlightening, to say the least. My guess is you're going to build most of these where the need is greatest. Where now in the county is the need the greatest?
I think that that is a super interesting question, and then I'll, I'll ask Kelly if she has another thought on this, council member, but I think we are at a level of need so far outpacing supply in terms of housing, particularly housing for people who are experiencing homelessness in this county, that we have need everywhere. The need looks different in different places. That said, when we zoom all the way out and look at the macro level, the majority of people experiencing unsheltered homelessness are either in Seattle or South King County. And so data wise, that's pretty clear. Data wise, it's also clear that we have a lot of movement throughout our region of folks. And so I think it's, it is factually true that not everybody, you know, receiving services in Seattle, you know, grew up in Seattle. And so it's really hard to say like where people are from. I think the only other, the juxtaposition that I would draw is anywhere where you see a 10 person encampment or a five person encampment or one person in a tent, that need is really acute for that person. So we are looking county wide. And I think we see clearly that the way it looks in a city like Bothell, for example, to do a health through housing facility may look very different than it looks in downtown Seattle versus, you know, rural Enhamclaw.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Leo and Kelly, it's always, it's always good to hear from you and and see yet another presentation. And I just, you know, I want to say, I want to say thank you to the county for taking this regional approach and working with cities instead of forcing cities into making decisions that might not be best for their communities. So I just wanted to say thank you for taking that approach. I had a couple of questions, just wanted to ensure that we have opportunity to talk about. We talked a little bit about the need in different cities or different areas of our region may, may look different. Seattle versus the east side, for example. When we talk about sheltering homeless individuals, some of them can be, you know, mothers with children. Some of them can be single fathers. Some of them can be youth that are couch surfing. So there's, we talk often about the different types of homelessness and the different types of needs around the region. How will these types of facilities help with those different needs within the actual community itself? So as an example, Bothell, how would we be able to look at this in a regional approach while at the same time helping the homelessness within the city of Bothell that we currently have?
Absolutely. This is a place where, in all candor, I think the county is developing in a good way right now. So if asked this question five years ago, I think we would have really emphasized centralized referrals, county wide assessment, where are the folks who have the most need, and then how can we prioritize them for very limited units? Where we are now is with Health Through Housing specifically, we want to come to an agreement with any host city on the number of units that are available for local jurisdiction, local city referral versus units that are available for city referral or for county referral. So in a really direct way, council member, any agreement that we would strike would include a percentage of the building that's available for local referral for people experiencing homelessness currently within the city of Bothell, for example. And then what number of units would be available for what we call centralized referral? So that exactly to your point, it is both a regional and a local resource. And that's really a recognition that, you know, that's just another facet we think of what partnership needs to look like as we seek to create this kind of capacity. To your other point, you know, some communities have many, many more seniors experiencing unsheltered homelessness. Some communities have many youths. And so I think we would want to take a look at the sort of local composition. We, there are some populations that we won't mix together, so we won't tend to do a single adult facility combined with a facility that has large numbers of children or families. Just because the service packages tend to be Um, just because the service packages tend to be very different, and so we'd lose some of the economies of scale. Um, and that might not be the best environment for everybody. Um, the last thing I'll observe is in 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 candor and respect. We are particularly looking for ways to provide services to single adults. Um, and don't want to be anything other than candid about that. That's the one population that is the hardest to find services for. I think that's certainly the population that a lot of us see um when we talk about uh unsheltered homelessness. Um, and it is a population that uh, you know. Frankly, I think it's really important for us to serve as our all populations, but it's sometimes the hardest population to find resources for. Kelly, I don't know if there's anything you'd want to add to that.
I think you got it.
Great, thank you. Um, and I have two more quick um questions. I don't want to take too long, but. Um, I I want to echo uh Deputy Mayor Zorn's comment about working across. Uh, I I want to say the the line, the county lines. Um, we don't see that line, right? Our community doesn't see that line. So a service that, you know, you you put a facility in downtown, that facility could help people from Snohomish County as well. As you said, somebody who grew up outside of Seattle and then moved to Seattle, maybe homeless and seeking those those services. So um, would really love to see us find a way to work across those lines between counties. Um, because we do represent um two counties, but again, no line. And and I think you have Auburn as well that spans King and Pierce County as an another example uh of that. So those those services need to not only help us regionally, but within our communities, they need to be servicing all of our communities um at large. Um, and then the last piece, I think that is um that we're hearing more and more about. Um, that I I hope we can find a way as we partner or if we partner, how it looks to include social services on the north end. Um, we have a lack of social service facilities to provide those services uh for individuals in need. Um, and I think this may be the avenue to find a way to provide those social services that are needed. Um, whether it be housing or just facilities that offer those services. I think it is imperative that we continue to keep that um as an open opportunity. Um, and I and I hope, um, you know, after we have our council discussion. Um, that this this will be mainstream front front and important to all of us that we find those social service. Um, opportunities to to create those opportunities for our members in that community. So, uh, again, thank you so much. Um, always enjoy, and I look forward to uh the next RPC where I get to get to hear from you about all the wonderful work you're doing. Thank you.
Well, thank you both for the presentation. Uh, so I have a couple of questions here. Um, so do you know approximately how many units the funding is projected to support? I guess throughout the project as it gets ramped up.
So the goal right now is sixteen hundred households, uh, so that approximately sixteen hundred units. Um, we'll see how many couples versus individuals and how that all shakes out. But sixteen hundred units uh is the goal, uh, and we're tracking very closely on the sales tax forecasts to see whether we would be able to expand that. But it all uh rests on how well we can do in the acquisition market.
Okay, so that was, that was the sixteen hundred in the one of the earlier slides. Great. Uh, so the. I guess in the early search phase with the with the city, what kind of staff time is needed from a city? Or or is it mostly the the King County doing it in coordination?
Yeah, so I think it really depends on how much the city wants to be engaged and involved and how much the council really wants to proactively provide direction. Uh, we have been in these conversations with several cities at this point in time, and so we've developed some FAQs. We've developed some kind of policy uh overarching documents to talk about how we will partner with the city and what type of referral process we'll use as Leo spoke to. And so we have some packages that we can absolutely provide. Uh, if there are certain things that are really important to the council, to city administration, uh, then we can certainly be flexible to that as well. Um, in one city I can think of, we've probably had um meetings about every other week for a couple of months. Uh, because that pattern worked for them, uh, and there was a really hot uh acquisition opportunity that we were exploring. Um, in other cities, we've kind of come in for one meeting and then the county has gone back to our facilities folks. Uh, and we've been looking through property and the city really hasn't had to invest a lot of time at this point in time. Um, just waiting to see if there's a property that would be an option. So a wide variety.
All right, great. Yeah, as as one of our council members said earlier, we don't have a dedicated staff. So that was kind of one of my big questions was kind of the the demand and how we can work and support, work in that collaboration. But it it sounds like, you know, the initial. Could be the the initial handshake uh in coordination and then, you know, the the county can do a lot of the. Searching and analyzing of it. I mean, you you have the experienced staff in looking at, so that sort of makes sense.
Yep, and I do think it's important, as you have said, uh, at any time, the city can say red light and we will stop. Uh, in some cities, uh, they've really wanted to get into the details before giving us the green light to even search. Uh, and I would just caution in that situation, uh, there is potentially a lot of work happening, even if there is no viable property available. Uh, and so, uh, as Leo said, it's completely up to the city how you would want to direct us, and we will partner in the way that works for you. Um, but there is an option that we could have our facilities folks really take that first launch into even looking if to see if a property. Uh, works before you all really dive into the weeds. Uh, and then the staffing would only need to come into play if there was actually a viable building.
Great. Yeah, I I think that's definitely a a question our council have is is do we even have a property that meets these criteria? So, all right, well, yeah, that was a lot of great information. I appreciate you. Both coming in, speaking with us and uh making us smarter on this uh opportunity and what you have to offer.
Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you for that.
To answer any questions or have any follow up conversations that are helpful.
Great, thank you. All right, on to council committee reports. Does anyone have a councilmember Agnew?
Yeah, we had the wire eight meeting. Uh, it's always an interesting meeting. Uh, went for about two hours and fifteen minutes. Uh, talked about update committee reports and then a letter about a proposed asphalt plant along SR one six nine in the Cedar River Basin. That uh caused a little uh conversation on that. Uh, we talked about watershed management grant funding, uh, their budget. And then last but not least was a fascinating uh. Presentation uh using the best available science about the ship canal and deoxygenation levels in the ship canal. And temperature gradients in the ship canal uh that are having a significant impact on our our salmon survival. And uh, Jeannie, uh, Deputy Mayor Zorn uh went out and asked the city if we could have the presenter, uh, who is Lauren Ergensen. Uh, uh, give us a report, and I think the interim city manager said maybe in November, October, November, that's about the time that. Uh, she's going to come in and talk to us about that. So fascinating meeting. Another one down. Who's next?
I will just say that in the landmark preservation board, so we were looking at, uh, so the landmark board met with uh Imagine Housing. That's working on the Sama Senior House over on Lot A. Uh, so it used to be the Tax Shack, uh, Equestrian uh supply kind of that. Was there, I think, in in the sixties? And so, um, so there was really kind of coordination and discussion on what kind of. Kind of educational board installation might go and where it would be located. Uh, so there is a a public trail that's going around the property. So that sounds like the discussions on where that will be going. But it it's, it's, it's definitely encouraging to see. And I think Councilmember Dure, Dure. Would agree that, you know, the landmark board has come quite a ways uh with being integrated better with the development. And kind of the earlier in the process. I think that's one thing that we were always striving for is being involved earlier and being able to. Uh, have a little more communication and get that educational and outreach with the developer uh before it's too late in the process. So, so it looks like it's it's coming along and. Uh, it's, it's still a learning process, but it's, it's definitely, uh, I think, a better process than what we had dealt with in the past. So it's very encouraging and uh some great questions and discussion went on there. So still seeing no other, so we will move on to visitor comments. City clerk, do we have anyone that wishes to speak this evening?
I did not have anybody sign up to speak, and I did not receive any written comments either. I don't know if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak. If so, if there's anybody in the audience that wishes to speak, please use the raise hand function. I don't have anybody.
All right, thank you. So we will move on to the consent agenda. And nothing was polled, so I will ask for a motion, Councilmember Dure.
Moving past the consent agenda.
Councilmember Agnew.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Dure to approve the consent agenda as as offered with a second by Councilmember Agnew. Any discussion on the item? All right, seeing none, city clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name, Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson?
Yes.
Councilmember McCollis?
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yes.
Mayor Olson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dure?
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yes.
Pass the seven zero.
Great, thank you, everyone. Uh, so that takes us to our next item. Uh, the, we have a couple of public hearings, so item twenty one dash zero eight zero. The extension of interim ordinance allowing the use of private parking for outdoor dining. So I will now open this public hearing, and I believe we will have our community development director, Mike Cotterman. With us, and there we go, on cue, perfect.
All I heard was my name as I was coming in. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. Uh, so tonight is a public hearing, and we're asking for council action on an interim ordinance, an extension or renewal of an interim ordinance. If this looks familiar, it's because this is the third time that we've brought this to you. Uh, the original ordinance was a year ago, uh, we brought to the council, and it's to allow the use of private property or private parking areas for outdoor dining. Uh, this was something that was obviously initiated during the pandemic, early on in the pandemic, in order to allow for more outdoor dining. When there were a lot more restrictions on indoor dining uh for restaurants and other eating establishments in the city of Bothell. So we renewed uh in, reestablished it, I should say, in December of last year. Uh, that six month interim ordinance is up this month. So we're asking the council, uh, if you would like to extend that for another six months. That's what the ordinance in your packet would do. There are really two questions before the council. One is whether to extend that, and the second is whether to continue not collecting the fee for the uh the inspections that are done on those. Um. Uses in the parking areas. That's what we've been doing so far, so it would just be a continuation of the current practice. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Dure.
Thank you, Director Cotterman. So, um, can I ask, I I've forgotten now. Um, the fee that we're not collecting, can you remind me the? What that adds up to?
Uh, yes, it's, it's not a huge amount. It's a just a few hundred dollars. And basically, it's the time, basically one hour of inspection time for a typical inspection. Uh, and then there's a separate permit if they're doing any kind of a uh of a canopy or something like that that is related to the fire permit. So it's, I want to say it's less than five or six hundred dollars. We haven't had a lot of people that have used this particular uh option. So there really isn't a huge impact in terms of any collection of fees for the city.
Well, and also, it would it be cheaper because they've already been inspected if they're continuing? It's really the new, correct?
Correct, yes, yes. Thank you for that clarification. This is just if someone's coming in and doing it for the first time. Once they've been inspected, as long as they're continuing that, if they don't change that operation, there's no new inspection required. So this isn't, we don't have to go back and reinspect every six months. That's not what this is, what this does.
Great, so I I would be in favor of continuing to waive the fee as new as as restaurants maybe come online. Um, and then can you, um, you had said private parking, but really it's not just private parking, correct? Because there's there's city street parking that's also being used, for instance, the Hoppin Hound, right?
That's, that's really handled separately. Uh, they 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 still have to get a permit for that. It's more of a right of way use permit, and we're handling that through our public works department. This is, what this does is it specifically waives certain parking requirements in our development regulations.
Oh, got it. Okay. Oh, okay, that makes sense. So it's, it's less about. Never mind, that makes sense to me. And then, um. Do we have any, I guess this would have been for Director Bothwell, but I was wondering if we have any um financial data on the success. Um, of this project, um, and allowing this type of um usage in terms of collections for um taxes or that sort of thing. Do we have any numbers on that?
I'm not aware of any numbers, but it looks like Director Bothwell is available to answer that question.
He was hiding, but I I called him.
I I would, I would say, I don't have, like I said, I don't have numbers, but one measure of success is are these restaurants that have been using this still open? And that answer is yes.
They are, yeah. Thank you.
I guess I was paneled in so I could answer that question. The um, the, we do have access to data through the Department of Revenue that would allow us to go into individual restaurants and figure out what their sales were. Uh, under the current uh setup versus what they were before. So we probably could, and then also what happened, of course, when things were shut down or it was takeout only before some of these um outdoor eating. Uh, areas got bigger. So we probably could get to that data. The thing about that data is that it would be difficult for us to publish it publicly or to share it uh on an individual taxpayer basis because it is confidential information. But if we could grab enough of them, if we went around the city and identified each one of the restaurants that was availing itself of the opportunity to have a larger outdoor eating area. Uh, we could probably come up with some numbers to say what it's done for the community. It would be a bit of a project and a little, there'd be some analysis involved, but we could get to it if you if you were interested. So, you know, my ask would be just communicate that through the city manager if you want us to do that, and we'll definitely take that project on, and we can report back. I think there are enough, generally, when you get to be, when when you have at least five or more businesses in like a cluster that we're reporting on. We can go ahead and report the results publicly uh at that point because you wouldn't be able to identify a specific taxpayer, what uh specific, how a specific business, what their results were. Um, so I think we could get there. So and we have access to the data. It would just be a bit of analysis that that we're not currently doing, but we'd be happy to do. And I think we have all the data that we would need to, so.
Just just to add to what what uh Director Bothwell said, we have just a handful of these that have actually used it. So I'm not even sure if we have, we may have five or six. Uh, but to my knowledge, we haven't really had any.
Sorry, I had a drink delivered to me and I just couldn't resist because it's so cool. Um. Thank you, girls. Um, I, well, I'm a big fan of of this, um. This, I get, I don't know what you call it, this experiment, um, just because I think, um. A, it's, it's just made our city more interesting and given people places to go and gather. And so on, on, on that front, I think it's already been a huge success. But for those, for those of us, um, and I'm sure there are those in the community who who like data, and I do like to make decisions based on data. I I would just love to know, um, because I don't think the city always toots its own horn in terms of what we do to to try to help the community. And um, and so just for that reason, I would love to know if it's not a crazy amount of work. I think it would be great to kind of know um the impact. And also it might help us, um, you know, in future, future projects, um, like our our incubator. It might give us a little more um information in terms of um what these types of programs can do um for our economic development. So that's my two cents, but I really appreciate you being uh available to answer the question and offer, if the rest of council is interested, to to dig in a little bit more on the data. to, to dig in a little bit more on the data. So thank you. Thank you, Director Cotterman, as well.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Cotterman. I, you said five, so I wasn't sure how many we were actually dealing with. That sounds like a very good number when I look around to see who's using this. My question is, since we have a date of October 3rd for Main Street, now we're looking at November for this ordinance. Do we want any coordination or does it really matter?
Thank you for that question. I'm not, I'm not sure in the, in the bigger picture if it really matters too much because there, there are separate, separate types of, of usage areas that we're talking about. One is public right-of-way, the other is private property. So we're, we're handling it in different ways. But in terms of this ordinance, the council always has the ability to, to rescind this ordinance at any time, simply by a motion and a vote. And then, and we're anticipating that because things are opening up more. Right now, everything's still at 50% capacity. So we think this is, you know, important to keep this going for a while longer, certainly through the summer months. Once we get into the fall, if things have reopened more completely, then we need to get back to the indoor dining and using all the parking that's required for that restaurant. Because more people will be coming and presumably parking there as well. If they want to do something outdoors, then we would go through a, a different process, a more traditional process for evaluating that. So the council can keep this going longer if you want, or stop it at any time.
That's very clear, but I think that's important. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thanks, Mayor. I don't know if it's appropriate now, but I was going to crack a joke about the noise that happened in the background of Councilmember Doer, Doer's house being the spell that she cast to bring Bothwell, Director Bothwell, in here. It's like summon Bothwell and he just appears. I, I am totally in favor of extending this for another six months. I really like seeing all of the pop-up activity around for the businesses that have taken advantage of this. I, I'm, I think the recommended action is the right way to go.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Comment, I don't think, question, but thank you Directors Cotterman and Bothwell for chiming in and helping us appreciate what, what, what has come together here. I had a similar question to Councilmember McAuliffe on, should we synchronize it with the closure of Main Street? And thinking about it, there's the teardown and that sort of thing. We're talking about a month difference, right? So I, I don't feel really hard-pressed to do a, you know, start thinking about making a shift and ending this prematurely. If you have the bandwidth to get the information, I think Councilmember Doer made a good argument for it. My, if I had to make an educated guess, I would say, yeah, we've probably made up those fees and the sales taxes of where the public's been able to dine outside. But those numbers, if, that's cap letters, if, if you have the bandwidth to do it, would, might be nice to have. So just wanted to add that as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Director Cotterman and Bothwell. I had a question. Is it possible for outdoor dining in these areas to do food trucks?
Yes, we do allow food trucks as well. It's a separate, separate permit process, but we do allow food trucks.
So if one had a parking lot, they could potentially have opened it up to some food trucks? Did you use, they'd have two different permitting processes, but they could do that? Is that correct?
I believe so, yes. I'll look into that a little bit more, but, but I believe so because I know we allow food trucks and we're currently allowing the use of these parking areas. So it may be that they're overlapping a little bit. But we, I think we also allow for the food truck to park in a parking lot. But it's usually on a more temporary basis. You know, they're, they're in for a period of time and they're out again. If they're parked there permanently, that's, that's a different type of review and a different permit.
Okay, but the outdoor dining, they could pull in, have outdoor dining with this process and then pull out and leave. Would that be allowable?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, good. I just also want to say thank you for the proactive thinking on this, being nimble, helping during our, the pandemic and ensuring that we support our businesses and, and allow people to continue to go out and, and now that we hopefully are coming out of the pandemic and the summer's upon us, I hope, hope more take advantage of it. So thank you for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So let me just ask our city clerk if there was anyone, any comments? Public comment on this or if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak?
We did not receive any, any comments written or otherwise.
All right. Then Councilmember Doer.
I would like to move the recommended action with the added request that we have a report regarding the financial implications of this decision. Does that make sense?
Is the, is the approval conditioned upon achieving that information? Because that would have to come later.
It sounded like we had to request it and not everyone weighed in. So I'm just trying to make it simplified. For as part of the
Councilmember Thompson.
I'd like to second and also speak to the motion. Can I do that right now or do I have to wait?
Uh, I will.
Okay. All right. Thank you, City Attorney Byrne. I, I would like to see, as long as it's not too big of a lift, and I didn't get the feeling from Director Bothwell that it was going to be a huge thing. I'd, I'd love to see just like, on average, like how much tax revenue do we bring in for a table? And how many tables can we fit in a parking spot? And, you know, what, what does this change bring us economically regardless of if there's a pandemic?
All right, so we have, so we have the motion by Councilmember Doer, the recommended action to adopt an ordinance renewing for six months, the interim official control originally adopted under ordinance number twenty-three thirty-five that temporarily, temporarily allows use of a private property parking for outdoor dining with the study of the impact that this has had on those businesses done by the financial department. With a second by Councilmember Thompson, any discussion on this item? Councilmember McNeil.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. While I support continuing and extending this for an additional six months, the motion that's on the floor would mean that we would not be able to extend it without that data. And so just with that piece of it, I won't be in support of it, but I do support the extension.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Yes, thank you. And while I recognize that Councilmember Doer has a very great question and maybe it would be good if we could have that information, I do not think it should be part of this motion.
Councilmember Agnew.
I too support the motion, but not the amendment to the motion. I think that's an entirely separate item.
All right, seeing no further discussion. City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
No.
Councilmember McNeil.
No.
Mayor Olson.
No.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew.
No.
Sales four to three with Councilmember McAuliffe, Councilmember McNeil, Mayor Olson and Councilmember Agnew dissenting.
All right.
Sorry, just correction. Those four councilmembers you named were in the majority of four versus three. It was actually Councilmember Doer, Councilmember Thompson and Deputy Mayor Zornz that were in the, that were dissenting in the minority.
All right, so I will need a motion on this item. Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to afford the motion, the recommended motion approving the interlocal. Let me make sure I got the right. Can you read the motion, the AB number again to me, please?
If, if you're looking to do the recommended action, you can say that and I will read the recommended action after your motion.
I'd like to move the recommended action.
All right. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember McNeil to adopt the ordinance renewing for six months, the interim official control originally adopted under ordinance number twenty-three thirty-five that temporarily, temporarily allows use of private property and parking for outdoor dining with a second by Deputy Mayor Zornz. Councilmember Doer.
I just wanted to ask, how do we get the study? Is, are we just leaving it up to staff to decide? Since we're not, now we're not requesting it. I'm not sure what the proper procedure is going forward. If, I don't know why people voted against it, but I'm trying to understand, does this mean we don't want the information? I'm just confused. We don't want, we don't want the financial information or are we leaving it up to staff to decide if, if they have the time to do it? I'm unclear what we're doing.
I think that's an item that we could bring up in council conversations. Out, I guess, outside of this one, since it didn't pass from the original motion. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz. Is that a yes?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Mayor Olson.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Doer, why not?
Councilmember Agnew.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
All right, thank you. So moving on to AB twenty-one dash zero eight one, the extension of interim ordinance temporarily suspending the BMC twelve backslash thirty-two dot one twenty regarding site plans and submittals of related permit applications. So I'll now open this public hearing and I believe, well, I'll turn it over to Director Cotterman and he can introduce the staff as they come in. If there is staff coming in.
And tonight we have Jeff Smith, our, excuse me, Development Services Manager, who is going to be doing the presentation and answering any questions since I seem to be losing my voice. Jeff.
What do I do? All right, sorry. Trying to find all the buttons. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Director Cotterman. Thank you, Mayor Olson, members of the council. This is similar to the action that you just took, although I'm hoping it's not quite as, as, as complex maybe as that was. This is also an extension of an interim ordinance that was passed December eighth, six months ago or nearly six months ago, that suspended a portion of the Bothell Municipal Code that required construction level permits to be submitted sequentially after site plan review. The goal in that was to, was to get site plans figured out before, before applicants and others went to the expense and difficulty of creating full construction level documents for buildings that may not have got their site plan figured out yet. And so we looked at it as a way to streamline that, that process. That original suspension passed by the council back in December was, was primarily intended to, to help us with the transition to the new building code, which was adopted in February first, I believe. And, and so we suspended that so that, so that applicants could submit their building permit applications in advance of the February first change in codes if they so choose and get themselves vested to that code. And, and several of them did that. But, but that six-month timeframe is up now and this ordinance requests an extension of that action for another six months, which will primarily give us time to work through whether or not this should be a permanent change. We just haven't had the time and ability to work through that just yet. The last thing I wanted to say is that, that this, this only changes the sequencing of, of application submittals investing in our code. It doesn't change any of the public notification requirements in our code. If, if, if an application requires notification, requires, allows for public comment, all of that stays the same. So I believe that, that pretty much covers it. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Great job explaining it. I think you provided any questions? Deputy Mayor Zornz. Were you?
I think I'm premature because I was going to, one, say thank you for answering my questions and then move the recommended action, but I'm, not everybody's weighed in yet, so. But thank you. Thank you for answering my questions.
You're welcome. Thank you.
City Clerk, were there any public comments or anyone wishing to speak on this item?
There were not.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
I'd like to second that motion.
We do not have a motion yet. If you would like to make a motion.
Thank you. I'll move the recommended action.
Deputy Mayor Zornz. Was that a second? I, I'm sorry, I did not hear that. You're on mute.
I should, I should sign. Yes, I will second it.
All right. Thank you. So we have a motion by Councilmember McAuliffe to adopt an ordinance renewing the six months, for six months, the interim official control originally adopted under ordinance number twenty-three thirty-six that temporarily, temporarily suspends and waives application of section twelve dot thirty-two dot one twenty of the Bothell Municipal Code with a second by Deputy Mayor Zornz. Any discussion on this item? Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can't hardly tell if you can see it or not. I will be supporting this motion and I just wanted to thank the city for being nimble yet again in finding avenues to be creative and working with the development community. I know there's other ideas and things that you guys are working on internally to speed up the process, but this goes a long way with creating affordable housing and finding incentive programs and things like that to work with the development community. So I just wanted to say thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember McNeil. We appreciate it.
All right, seeing no further discussion. City Clerk.
Please say yes or no when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz.
Yes.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yes.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Yes.
Councilmember McNeil.
Yes.
Mayor Olson.
Yes.
Councilmember Doer.
Yes.
Councilmember Agnew.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Great. Thank you, everyone. So.
Thank you.
Let's take a five-minute break and then we will come back with Finance Director Chris Bothwell.
The recording has stopped.
I want to mention to you because I think that there are things that we're keeping a close eye on and they're likely themes for upcoming periods. Because they have the opportunity to impact future financial performance for the city. So the first one is the operational disruptions that were caused by the pandemic. In many cases, the result of that was that was savings and operations. As we get back to full strength and kind of work towards this new normal, those savings are likely to start to decrease and kind of fade away towards the end of the year. So it's something that we're taking, keeping a really close eye on. The next one is sales tax leakage. Just as a reminder, sales tax leakage is a sales tax that we lose to other jurisdictions when our residents travel outside of Bothell to make purchases. The sales tax, when you, when you purchase something outside of Bothell goes to the jurisdiction where you made the purchase. And traditionally, we have a fairly high rate of sales tax leakage because we don't have a lot of destination retail. But during the pandemic, our sales tax leakage decreased significantly because people were doing a lot of shopping from home. And in those cases, we get the sales tax from there, from those sales. So we don't know if consumer behavior is going to be permanently changed as a result of the pandemic. Or, or more, the future of consumer behavior will be more closely aligned with the pandemic behavior, or if it's going to go back to kind of the pre-pandemic behaviors which caused our sales tax leakage. So we don't know if we're going to return to an environment where we have pre-pandemic levels of sales tax leakage, but it could happen and it's something that we're keeping a close eye on. If that does happen, we would expect to see some modest declines in sales tax collections as people started to travel outside the city to, to make large purchases. And then, of course, inflation is kind of hard to ignore the chatter about inflation right now. And inflation is especially concerning to local governments for two reasons. First is the impact that it has on consumer confidence, which impacts our, can impact our sales tax collections when people are just spending less money because they're not as optimistic or based on their feelings of their personal wealth. The other one is the 1% property tax cap, which is very problematic in times of high inflation. So the, the concept is that if our costs basically track with inflation, so if we're, if inflation's, you know, 5%, but our revenues are capped at 1% when it comes to property tax, we have that gap and it becomes difficult to, to continue to fund existing levels of service. It's a condition that we often refer to as the structural deficit. And so for those two reasons, the property tax reason and the sales tax reason, we're especially concerned about high inflation. And so we're keeping a close eye on inflation as well. So I've got a few notable subsequent events and these are very positive. So these are things that just happened after the end of the quarter, but I wanted to bring your attention to. The first one is about our credit rating. So we are rated by Moody's and they come through once a year and they dig through our financial reports and figure out whether our current rating is still appropriate. And they can upgrade you or downgrade you at that time. We just completed our annual review and they sustained our AA1 rating, which is exciting because you may recall about 14 months ago, we were upgraded from an AA2 to an AA1. So them confirming that we're an AA1 and we continue to be an AA1 is really, it's kind of, it's exciting. Well, if you're a finance person, it's exciting, but the other item is that we recently completed the draft 2020 financial statements and the preliminary results suggest that the general fund was really close to meeting the, the minimum fund balance target at the end of 2020. And so you may recall that in late, excuse me, early 2020, before the pandemic was really the hot topic, you all adopted new comprehensive financial management policies. And one of those policies increased the, the general fund minimum fund balance target from a 60-day operating reserve to a 90-day operating reserve. And we really didn't have any expectation that we would, we would meet the new 90-day target in 2020 for a number of reasons. But a few things kind of went our way towards the end of the year and it looks like we were very close to meeting that 90-day operating reserve, which is our minimum fund balance targets. That's a, that's a very positive development as well. And then the last item that I have is that the sale of Lot A is scheduled to close in the next couple of weeks. If you've been around a while, you may recall that in the adopted budget, we had this property budgeted to close in 2019. So it's currently an unbudgeted one-time revenue. We always get excited about those, but it's just been a long time coming. So I thought I would highlight the fact that that's getting close. So that is the end of the quick update. Unless there's any questions, I'm going to send it over to Ricky to introduce the dashboard.
Councilmember Doer.
Thank you. I wanted to talk about the sales tax, the sales tax leakage. So what I'm curious about, to say that 10 times fast. So we know that there was added sales tax because I guess we're not going to name the reason, but the, the online retailer who's very big in this area gives us a property tax from those who purchased from home. But what I'm wondering is, and maybe, I don't know if this is the proper place to have this conversation, but when we talk about retail in Bothell, I really feel like we don't have a strategy for how to bring retail to Bothell. And I will tell you that the stores that I want to shop at are in Woodinville and I'd like to understand why they're in Woodinville and not in Bothell and what we can do to change it. And I don't know where to have this conversation. I guess we could have it in council conversation. But it seems like that is one strategy that we are not really going after, which could make a huge difference. I already tried doing the 1% property tax. I introduced that bill to lift the cap and went nowhere. And so I don't think it's going to change anytime soon. And so I think we talked during the budget conversations about having a long-term strategy. And I'm just wondering, is that something that's still on our radar? So that we're not having the conversation at lightning speed right before the next budgets do, but actually developing some sort of long-term strategy where we have the time and bandwidth to really tackle some of the bigger issues around what our revenues are.
So I can respond to a small piece of that probably. I think that it's a, it's a complete, I think the answer is probably very complicated. It probably has a lot to do with where you would cite destination retail and some zoning preferences and those kinds of things. But just from a business standpoint, from the finance department's standpoint, we are a very attractive place to do business. We have a fairly affluent community. We don't have a BNO tax. We have, our business license is, is very reasonable. There's no, we don't have some of those typical barriers that, that some communities might have where you have maybe a BNO tax that's at the, you know, at the absolute max. And some other things that, that make it a little less business friendly. But, but to be full, full disclosure, it's probably a very complicated analysis that would need to be performed. And I probably can only respond to a very small piece of it.
So can I just ask one follow-up question, Mayor?
Yep.
So I guess the question is, how do we, what needs to happen for us to start that conversation? Because every time we have a budget, we talk about the structural deficit. But I just don't feel like we're really tackling the underlying problem. We're just kind of pushing it off and crossing our fingers. And if not for the federal funds that came in this year, we would be in a very dire place. And that's, we're not going to be able to get federal funds every, every time. And so I'm just, I'm asking what needs to happen for us to be more proactive? And that can be a general question that sits and I can bring it up with interim city manager during my one-on-one, but I I just feel like that that conversation keeps getting pushed off and we're not solving the problem.
If you want to indulge me, I'm happy to kind of respond to what that might look like. I think we probably have the expertise if we were to assemble a work group in-house, but I don't think we have the capacity. So it would probably mean bringing in a consultant. And there's a number of consultants that do that kind of work that can do some kind of economic development assessment or put together some kind of plan. And if you want it focused, you know, on just on retail, destination retail or something like that, you could probably set the parameters for them. So I would say that, you know, as a path forward to respond to your specific question, we would just need to get something in the budget and then have a process to go out and find the right consultant to come in and produce some kind of report that would basically tell us what to do to lay the groundwork to, to, to try and attract some of that destination retail that would generate a lot of sales tax.
Okay. Yeah. Because originally, the reason for Jeannie Ash is because we talked about using one-time funds from the sale of Lot D. And I was really, really in favor of that because we didn't have the budget for her. And I'm just looking at federal funds coming in and some of the sales of these property. And I feel like maybe that's the time to spend the money to make money later, investing in that solution. So, thank you.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Bothell, you made a comment in your presentation that, you know, we're getting more revenue from development coming in. And then you kind of made a but then comment that was a little vague. Could I get you to expound on that?
Absolutely. I keep a list of things that departments talk to me about in terms of needs for the mid-biennial budget adjustment. And one of those things is Director Cotterman and I have had a conversation about some additional needs that that they have in terms of staffing to be able to staff the development, the increase in development or the the, the activity that is probably eclipsed what was budgeted or what was really planned for this year. And so that's all that was, was just kind of priming a conversation during the mid-buy to say, he might come and ask for something because there's more activity than we had planned and he's probably needing some resources for it. So I was probably getting a little outside of my box with that comment, but that's where it came from.
Okay, cool. That's good. And I, I agree that planning is where we can start to make some of these decisions like Councilmember Doer just brought up. You know, what do we want to do around long-term revenue? And I'm really excited to have that conversation because we are in a structural deficit. And I think we very much should be looking at what we can do around land use, around planning for things like destination retail to come in to help right-size that budget. There's an organization called Urban Three that I know I've brought up with some of you in here. And they're one of these groups that you mentioned. There's a few of them around and they'll essentially do a profit and loss land use analysis on your whole city and be able to say, hey, if you want to do, you know, if you want to make more money, here's what you can do. And here's the parts of your city that are costing you money. I would love to bring them in. They presented to the Kenmore Planning Commission a couple of months ago. It was really interesting. They've offered to come and present to us and regardless of whether or not we use them as a service, I think it would be really informative and useful for council to see. And for us to be able to have that conversation because, you know, land use is how we make long-term money. Land use is how we will close our structural deficit. When we make land use decisions, we're deciding what kind of tax revenue we're getting. Are we going to get property tax? If so, how much? Is it going to pay for it? If we get, you know, retail, sales tax, like we have to zone for that. We have to plan for that. So I, I think this is a conversation we absolutely need to have and I would love to have it before we get right up to the next budget. When we're just trying to patch holes again, like we were last year. Like I would like to get out in front of it and make the kind of changes and decisions that will reverberate 20 years down the road. So someday, future councils don't have to patch holes every budget and figure out what they want to cut. So anyway, I'll step up my soapbox now, but I would like to get the budget in a better place down the road.
Councilmember McAuliffe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I I think it's important that we look at kind of what we're doing currently. And, and I guess when I look at Begin at Bothell and I look at the work that Jeannie Ash is doing as Economic Development Manager, if we really want to delve into what we can do as a city to increase our retail, I think we should start with maybe having Jeannie Ash report to us about what, what she's doing and her progress and what she sees for our future. So I think your ideas are, are really good, Dina, and I appreciate that. And I think we should work really hard to get our retail more robust. But I'm going to tell you, I'd rather shop in Bothell than Woodinville.
Councilmember Agnew.
Well, I think that's some of the best news financially we've heard in a long time. So thank you. But when we first went into this pandemic, we laid off some personnel and we didn't hire personnel that were retiring. When are we going to get around to start filling those positions again?
So I mean, I, I can respond to a part of that. I mean, we don't have any, any long-term plans to bring folks that were laid off back. I think that one of the, one of the interesting conversations that I think we'll have during the mid-buy, the mid-biennial budget update will be when we look at what we, what our operating expenses are when we are full strength again, what that looks like relative to our revenue forecast. And then we can kind of start to maybe start to have that conversation outside of the effects of the pandemic. And I, you know, certainly that's, that's, that's a conversation that the council should absolutely invite if you're interested in it. But we didn't, we didn't forecast to bring those positions back, I guess is the answer.
Deputy Mayor Zorn.
I, I, I'm with Councilmember Agnew. I'm disappointed that, you know, we're, we're still, still not able to have that conversation about filling those positions that are sitting vacant. And, and as Councilmember Doer was talking about shopping in Woodinville, I hearken back to Bothell's missed opportunity to annex Woodinville before they became incorporated. So, so we are having to play catch-up. The, the only, I know we need to get on to the dashboard. I just want to say you made my day when you said we don't have to tap into general fund for the lease payment, that REITs got it covered. That was just like, you know, huge weight, huge weight. So thank you for that good news. You made, you made my night just with that. The one thing that I don't want to suggest a project that's going to put too many cooks in the kitchen. There's already been some good suggestions from Councilmember Doer and Councilmember Thompson. But I know in the past, not recent past, we've got a stellar school of business here on Yuvdeh Bothell and they came in with some planning ideas, you know, harkening back to what they did decades ago for Leavenworth on how to give, make Bothell more robust and vital and, and attractive and appealing. So there might be a place, if there's a, you know, if we get to the point where we're bringing a consultant in, see if Yuvdeh Bothell wants to be part of that conversation on what it would take to make Bothell a more magnet. So that was my only two bits. Thank you again for the good news on the lease payment. Really appreciate it.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Bothwell. Looking forward to seeing the dashboard. But real quick, as we move forward, I think one of the things that's resonating is hearing from the other council members is that when we look to the future of balancing our budget, we all want to balance our budget, I believe. But as we look to that future, also understanding what Bothell's going to look like in the future is going to be important. And so as we make our decisions on growth and land use and all the targets, targets that we've got to reach and meet, I think it's important to understand the diversity and the balance that's going to come to the city of Bothell. So I hope as we continue to have these conversations, we're talking about that balance and looking outward, outside of Bothell at other cities and what they're doing and where their revenue streams are coming from, so that we can better understand what the future Bothell's going to look like. Thank you so much for the update.
I'll be brief, but, oh, go ahead.
I was just going to thank everyone for their questions and hand it over to Ricky, but.
Yep. No, I, I just wanted to say thank you for the, the update on the, the first quarter. And I think this, you know, definitely puts a different spin on our discussion that we'll have on the mid-biennium discussion. So I appreciate that. And and I, I look forward to the presentation of the financial dashboard.
I think that's Ricky's cue.
Good evening, Councilmembers. This is Ricky from the Finance Department. Thank you, Chris, for the opportunity to present the first quarter financial dashboard. So we'll be utilizing Tableau. It's a, it's a data visualization software, which makes it easy to create charts and graphs that are easy and powerful to understand. Tableau allows for visual representation of data. It allows data to help make important decisions and helps identify and understand data in ways in which that we might not be able to if we were just looking at plain numbers on a spreadsheet. So what you can expect from us is the monthly dashboard, which will be posted to the city's website. And we'll also be presenting the quarterly dashboard to council and those will also be posted to the website. You might be asking, how are they different? The quarterly includes sales tax, REIT and general fund revenues, whereas the monthly will only show general fund expenditures and select capital project statuses. So on to dashboard number one, you'll see general fund department expenditures compared to the budget. This graph shows each department's budget compared to their expenditures based on the biennium budget. So this graph is sorted by budget size from top to bottom. The blue shading represents budget and the yellow shading represents expenditures. So this graph assumes that expenditures are evenly distributed throughout the budget. But that's not always a true representation. So it's not right or wrong if the percentage is over or under 12.5%. It just serves to monitor expenditures and spark discussions. So to the right, you'll see the sales tax graph, this, where the brown shading is the budget and the blue shading represents collections. The budget line is overlapped by the collections, which is a positive sign. And the shaded area is the difference between collections and the budget. Almost always, the collections will be higher than budgeted. And down below, you'll see real estate excise tax graph. And we use the same type of line graph as the sales tax. So collections is in orange and the budget is in blue. So we're also collecting more REIT money than what was forecasted. And that's great news for the city. And on to the second slide for select capital project statuses. So these are construction progress and constructions in progress. So you'll see budget versus, versus the expenditures. The budget's based on the total expected cost for the project. And the expenditure is the amount that has been spent so far since the beginning of the project. So stage three is about 80% finished and we can expect that to finish in the fall. And over to the right, you'll see the general fund revenues by classifications. This data chart shows collections compared to their forecasted budgets. These are broad categories of revenues that the city receives. So some of these are business and utility taxes, charges for services and permit revenues. And some, some of these are affected by seasonality. Some are cyclical and each are affected by a variety of factors that such as consumer spending habits or the health of the economy. So that, so the activity levels will fluctuate throughout the year. And the data chart below that is the general fund department expenditures compared to the budget. This is just the supporting data behind the first graph that we saw. So the monthly dashboards are, its purpose is to push out data closer to the month ends. So because sales tax takes longer to get, we, we generally receive sales tax from the state every two months. So we'll be finishing up the back dashboard and we'll post them to website. And the quarterly, quarterly dashboard will also be posted at a later time. And we're excited that we'll be able to provide insight on the financial status of the city and departments through a dashboard lens. So that's, and that concludes the dashboard presentation and we'll open up for questions.
Councilmember Thompson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. You know, in looking at the kind of how far along we are and like we're, you know, 12 and a half percent through the year, could you give me a feel for like, are there one-time expenses that are moving some of those up? Is it going to be mostly consistent throughout the year? Does that mean we're on pace or not on pace? I guess what is, what do those mean?
That's a great question. If I can defer that to our director, he can, he'll be happy to answer that.
Summon Bothwell.
So it's really, it's, it's kind of difficult to say on a, on a global basis. So each individual department, most of their expenditures are going to be for employee costs. And so they will be evenly distributed throughout the year. So you would expect, in most cases, you're going to expect for operating departments, and that's what we're showing you in terms of departments. The operating departments should be pretty close to where we are in the, in the quarter, in the month. So we're 12 and a half percent into the biennium. If a number, if any department was, you know, at 25% or even 15%, it would just generate a question. So if, if the finance department was at 15%, and you say, why are you at 15%? I could come back and be like, well, we had a software package that was budgeted and we bought it all in January. And so it's, we're going to look like that for the entire biennium. But in most cases, since we're so heavy, the employee costs are really heavy in the department, in the operating departments. I think what you're going to see most of the time is you're going to see that departments are going to be spending at or below the, we're kind of where we are in terms of how far we are along into their budgets. But as they kind of get a little out of whack, and I don't, I, I'm not going to ask Ricky to reshare it, but I think there is one or two departments that are a little ahead of where they should be or where the 12 and a half percent would be. And it is because they have these one-time, one-time purchases that are hitting their their, their expenditure lines. And so you'll see that with some departments that use consultants a fair amount. You might see it there. You might see, you know, the tail end of a study where we're, we're paying maybe a consultant, tens of thousands of dollars, you know, in the first quarter to complete something. You might see it. But really, the purpose of it is to generate a question and really get everyone kind of thinking about what that looks like. So things don't get way out of whack before we ask a question or we just don't present the data at all. And then we get to the end of the biennium and we're like, oh no, we got a problem. So it is, it's a conversation starter in most cases, but the departments that we are showing, I think you can reasonably expect that they should be tracking with about the percentage where we are in the biennium or below in a lot of cases.
Perfect. Thank you. And I just, this might not be the right place to say it, but I'm going to say it anyway. It's not really a question. It's just our Parks Department last year got decimated. And I don't know about you guys, but I would like to do events next year. Like I know that it's kind of a little too late for everything that we do this year. So as we go into the mid-buy adjustment and look at that, I would really love to be able to plan for some of the events that our community loves so much. So I'm just going to get that in while I'm here.
I will, I'll respond to that, even though maybe it doesn't, you didn't ask for a response, but I think that the
You're welcome to.
This, this mid-biennium, one of the things that Jennifer was talking about a lot when we adopted, when this budget was adopted, was that this is an unusual budget cycle. So generally, when cities that elect to do a two-year biennial budget, they're going to really look at that as a two-year planning period where we say, okay, we're going to really spend, we're going to put a lot of effort in at the beginning and we're going to plan for a full two years. And then when the mid-biennial budget adjustment comes along or the update comes along, you really look at like how the forecast is playing out towards what you thought was going to happen and have an opportunity to make adjustments. This one's totally different. I mean, it was, times were totally unpredictable and we were expecting this to be a much more robust mid-biennial budget adjustment. So I would say, you know, any, I've heard a couple of things from, from you all tonight that make me think that, that you really want to engage in a more robust conversation during the mid-biennial budget adjustment. So I would, or budget update, I would encourage you to, you know, share those thoughts with, with the interim city managers so that we make sure that we tailor the process to, to, to address those issues and get the outcomes that you're looking for.
Thank you, Director Bothwell.
Councilmember Doer.
I just wanted to thank Director Bothwell and Ricky for the information. With my very pointed questions, it may be in doubt that I'm not thrilled about the budget update, but I, I am thrilled. I'm glad that we don't have to make additional cuts. I just, I don't want to rest on our laurels on that. I want to make sure that we are wise and forward-thinking as we move forward. So just wanted to thank you for all of your work and the good news.
Yes, I'll certainly echo those. Thank you for the little tour, quick tour of the financial dashboard. I know we've talked about it for a little while, so I'm, I'm glad to see it here. And I know I've been sharing it with outside groups that it's coming. So I can now say that it's here and please go check it out and see all the great work that our financial group is doing. So thank you and I, I look forward to sharing it with the rest of our community.
Thank you all.
All right. So that brings us now on to AB 21-083, the State of the Court. And we have, I saw our judge, Rosano came in and it looks like we have our court administrator, Courtney White, as well.
All right. Good evening, I guess, everybody. Before I get started talking a whole lot, I want to run through a little bit of some of the numbers. And I'm not going to read them out loud to you. We put together a PowerPoint and I know the numbers are not the most exciting part. So we'll just go ahead and touch on a little bit of what we've got going on here. One of the things I looked up in One of the things um I looked up is that the Bothell Municipal Court was founded actually in nineteen ninety-three. And I thought that was kind of an exciting thing that we are looking at almost thirty years ago. So um, but I'll bounce off of that and I will also joke here a little bit. I ran into um our interim city manager and uh councilwoman Zornz and uh Kelly and um a couple of other people at the ride to remember on Saturday. And I joked about that I've written everything down so that I will be very focused and I won't do any of my little squirrel moments. And I'm already going to do one, so um, I'll try to keep to it. But um, but I did, I wanted to comment on that because what I noticed at that gathering were a number of people wearing T-shirts that said Bothell Strong. And I think that is the, the message. Um, it's the message that we've heard from a number of different departments and it's the message you're going to hear from me. And we're strong because we're stronger together. And I think that is a direct quote from our interim public works director from a couple of weeks ago. And um, definitely agree with that. So with that, um, we'll go on, keep going on our um, numbers here. Um, you can see that in twenty twenty, we did have a little bit of a reduction in the total filings, but really not as much as we could have expected. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about that. And in um, twenty twenty-one, it, I think we're going to be up to, if, and I'm going to say projected, this is me projecting, so we could summons Bothwell again because projecting to me was to take four months and multiply them by three. So I don't, I know that's not really the way that you do projecting and I'm just not that good with numbers to be able to figure it out. So, but in this situation, um, we're looking at, we're, we're, the numbers are coming right back up. And um, so we're expecting to be as busy, if not even more busy. So um, our probation department also rallied. They served over um, three thousand appointments during the whole COVID shutdown. They did, have been doing them virtually so that they can um, connect with individuals and kind of keep them going, keep things moving forward. Um, we've been offering the cognitive therapy, therapy classes online through Bothell. Um, and so that's, this is, this has all been just great work. But anyway, I said I wasn't going to read the numbers and now I'm reading the numbers. Sorry, guys. All right. Okay, so this is now, I'm going to stop with the PowerPoint and I'm actually going to do a little talking because I obviously don't just want to read the slides to you. The first thing I want to say is thank you. Thank you for re-establishing the tradition of receiving the State of the Court address. It is a basic precept of our constitutional form of government that the judiciary is an independent and co-equal branch of the government, along with the executive and legislative branches. But it is so important for all three branches to remember that harmonious cooperation among the three branches is fundamental to our system of government. Those are both quotes from um Supreme Courts. One of them is federally and one of them is Nash, is our state Supreme Court. And the fact that you have invited me to make this presentation to you shows how Bothell approaches this. And I have to tell you, when I see what's happening in some of the other jurisdictions and the issues that have been created, I am so proud to be part of a city that understands exactly what I just said. There are three independent branches of government and those three independent branches of government work cooperatively. It's also extremely important for our, for our community to see the leadership of those three different branches coming together to coordinate and to work for their benefit. It is important to, to, to solidify the independence as it relates to access to justice and the community's faith in a fair and impartial judiciary. So thank you again for opening your doors, lines of communication between our respective branches. The purpose of tonight's address is to highlight the court's achievements and challenges over the last two years. To discuss the overall health of the judicial branch in the city of Bothell. And I am extremely pleased to tell you that the judicial branch in Bothell City Government is strong. We are processing thousands of cases per year, cases impacting the lives of the people of Bothell. We have continued to deliver services to the Bothell community in the face of some pretty significant challenges. Two thousand nineteen saw the court facing the challenge of losing Judge Gelson to the district court bench and integrating a new judge, me, into the existing court. When I started in December of two thousand nineteen, I was, I was, you know, because you saw me. I was excited to be part of the community that was so, that was so focused on serving the members of their community, um, working on innovative courts, working on restorative justice, just really truly willing to reach out and to kind of stretch to see how we could, we could address those issues and to do it in a manner that actually would have an impact for the sake of our community. From the beginning, I felt the desire of this council and the, the city manager to focus on the restorative justice, to focus, focus on exploring new forms of, of community court and other more effective ways to address crime in Bothell. So we hit the ground running. Immediately, we got, we called together stakeholders, we had meetings. We talked about efficiencies in the court, how to work on setting up lines of communication that would, and those lines of communication would prove invaluable when COVID hit. But that was our, right, right away, in December, we were already started. You know, switching over into twenty twenty, it's hard to remember that there was part of twenty twenty that was pre-COVID, but there was. And we were able to work during that period of time and come up with a master calendar for the court, for court efficiencies. Um, we continued to meet with stakeholders during that time and kind of fine tune that master calendar. And then COVID hit. I guess I'm going to back up a little bit on that master calendar. It was really important for us to meet because I know that it was important for the city and for me, that the position as of the judge remain part-time. And that magic point of that changing is thirty-five hours. Once the judge has thirty-five judicial hours, that becomes a full-time judge and ha- and subject to election. The administrative office of the courts has estimated the judicial need for the city of Bothell based on caseloads at one and a quarter judges. If you look at thirty-five hours as a full-time judge, that means that their estimate is, um, and I did the math and I'm looking forward to my notes, so give me just a second. That estimate would be forty-three point seven five judicial hours a week. When we redid the calendar, we were able to eliminate most of the pro temp use that was going, that was happening previously. And we were able to keep it under thirty-five hours. And, and we're very proud of that because that has been a big thing, especially during COVID because COVID has a whole different impact when we're doing Zoom. So just as we were getting to know each other, having all of these meetings, COVID hit. And COVID hit the court pretty quickly because on March twentieth, we had to quarantine. We had had a potential exposure to um active COVID and we had to shut down the court and quarantine for fourteen days. Well, backing up, I'm, I'm jumping ahead of myself, backing up right before that happened, right as COVID was really coming in. The um, we were approached by law enforcement because they wanted to work on being able to set, to notify, to contact and release individuals when they were subject to a Bothell Municipal Court warrant. The jails were shutting down, they weren't accepting individuals, officers were putting themselves at risk. And we were able to immediately issue an emergency order to that effect. And I really have to do a, a moment to praise my court coordinator because when, as soon as I said, yes, I would issue that order, she immediately, it took her less than five minutes, created a form for the officers to be able to give to individuals saying, here's your next court date. We're not going to arrest you, show up for court. And it was, it literally took her five minutes and she jumped on, you know, as soon as I said it, that's what we're going to do, she got it done. So again, and you're going to hear a lot of that, of this about my staff during this time, so yeah. Thank you. I see you, Councilman, Councilmember Doer, and it is. So we had to shut down, back to back. My staff immediately jumped into figuring out ways that they could use that time when we were shut down to get things done. They started taking classes that they needed to take. They started working on those projects that we all have in every, every job we've ever had that are the when we have time to get to them projects, but nobody can take time to do it. And they jumped on those. They didn't, they didn't sit at home thinking, you know, hey, you know, I'm going to take up knitting or something like that, which, you know, might have been productive, but not particularly for the court. Um, they were on it. They um, they jumped on all of that, but most importantly, they helped me find ways to reopen the court and keep processing cases. And that is incredibly, incredibly important. Because of their efforts, we were one of, if not the first, and I'm going to, I'm going to actually lay this at Courtney's feet. Because of her efforts, and I know she worked with other staff on this, but we all, we were, I think we were actually the first court in the state of Washington to offer virtual court hearings. I'm not a hundred percent sure of that. Edmonds might have snuck in a day or two ahead of us. But we were there, we were on it and we were doing those, those hearings. But that effort would not have succeeded. We would not have been able to get off the ground if the city attorney's office and our defense attorneys, our other stakeholders, IS, everybody was involved in making it possible for us to do that. Everybody came together, everybody was agreeable and cooperative in keeping our court moving forward. Courtney was able to quickly, and I say quickly, I mean amazingly quickly, implementing uh the safety protocols that brought us into compliance with any of the CDC requirements. She got a Plexiglas in the courtroom, she had um screening masks, you know, everything you could possibly imagine. She was on it and getting those from the administrative office of the courts, from the city, from any place that she could get them to make sure that we were ready and able to partially reopen as soon as that was possible. They worked with, and I, and I, I can't, all the different departments that we worked with, risk management, um, you name it. We were, she was working with them, she was the direct liaison. Um, I know we had Rick was working with, with risk management with the city. We, everybody was working on that to make it so that we would be able to move forward. We have eventually through this process, we were, we were also able, it was not our first priority, but we were able to get it done, that we were able to change the clerk's workstation so that they now have the physical barrier between each of their stations to allow them more safety within the workspace, um, within their work um area. I'm going to do a, a side here. Bothell Youth Court was also able to keep, to figure out how to keep doing hearings, doing trainings, working towards their goals through the use of the Zoom platform. Um, despite, now despite the, the University of Washington's discontinuing their course next year, the youth court will carry on with its, with its community advisory board and high school participants. They've been, they've been figuring it out and working it out so that they can keep that going. So I'm really proud of our Bothell Youth Court as well during this time. So while this is all going on, Courtney got, was selected amongst uh the numerous administrators and court staff and judges within the, the state to participate in a jury trial task force. She was actually seated with our, or I think went into a small section with our current chief justice um and had to face down the fact that she was sitting there with Supreme Court ju- with a Supreme Court justice, who might be just a little intimidating. But they were able to work together and came up with allowing the Supreme Court to implement emergency orders that allowed us to proceed with jury trials using that, that virtual court or Zoom uh platform. Again, we came back, brought the information to our stakeholders. Those open lines of communications were so important in that time. We were able to work with them and convince them to at least give it a try with this. And consequently, we were able to, to open up and start doing a number of jury trials during that period. Again, um, during that time, we, Courtney and Heather and other staff members were all working. I don't, I think Christine may have been also part of this because she handles our traffic infractions, but they worked with IS and were able to implement a, a, the means, there we go, for individuals to go onto the Bothell Municipal Court website and handle their traffic infractions through an online submission if they wanted to. I cannot emphasize enough the importance of us, the Bothell Municipal Court staying open. It was important for our citizens to see their government was still working and not shutting down during the pandemic. But there, and it's also was extremely important to keep things moving. We talk about restorative justice and one of the key factors in restorative justice is the timeliness of it. Um, and so we were, we were having people, they were coming in front of us, they were facing accountability very quickly. Again, the city attorney's office, you know, responded very well, defense attorneys very well, and we were able to keep going. I'm going to counter that with other jurisdictions who are now facing the end of the pandemic, the end of the crisis and realizing that they shut down. And whether, you know, what, who is responsible for that, whether it was the judges, the, the defense bar, the prosecution or a combination thereof. I'm sure that you know, in King County, King County Superior Court is asking their county counsel for, I believe they said twenty-two additional judges to be able to address the backlog of criminal cases in their court from this last year. And they predict that with twenty-two additional judges for the next year, they will only be trying the, the most violent offenses, talking homicides, robberies, assault first degrees. They're not, they don't anticipate being, doing their first non-violent trial for at least a year. And I think that they're putting out things like divorces and things like that three years. So when you look at that backlog, um, city of Seattle has over eleven thousand traffic infractions in a backlog. So, and then not even taking into consideration the, the caseload in King County District Courts, courts of limited jurisdiction. So then we come to Bothell and our backlog. We don't have one. It's that simple. We do not have a backlog. And that's because Bothell's strong, stronger together. We were able to work with our city attorney, our defense bar, our, our police department, the tr- the transport officers, IS, you name it. Everybody collaborated, came together to make it so this court could keep going and keep going strong. And we were able to stay ahead of that backlog that so many other jurisdictions are facing right now. And again, it's, it's, I don't think the blame can be laid at any one area. It's just the lack of that cooperation. And uh, so again, how, how excited am I? How proud am I to be part of Bothell? And I, I touched on it when we were going through the numbers, but our probation department, they completely rallied. They started implementing right away a virtual um probation hearings with the people that they were working with. They stayed in contact with them. Cage, Paige Strague, one of our, our senior um probation officer, senior to Bothell, was able to get certified to be able to do DV MRT classes out of Bothell. So she's doing the, 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 those classes. Rick Silcox came in, um, new to Bothell, literally the day we shut down was the day of his final interview. So it took a little bit, but he has been here, he's been working on all, on the, with all of these. But he has been here, he's been working on, on the, with all of these individuals. He's been spearheading our community court efforts. He's been reaching out, he and Paige both actually have been reaching out to help establish Bothell-focused partners. They brought in ICron. We're now able to offer random UAs through our probation department because of ICron. Rick is looking into, and we'll talk about this a little later, but the potential of Bothell having, being able to do Bothell work crew through Bothell, through him in community court, maybe outside of community court, that's still kind of up in the air. We're trying to figure out how that's going to work and what all of the ramifications of that will be. So that's very early days on that, but all of this is happening during this time. So while we're dealing with all of these things, our Supreme Court was not idle. And I think many of you are quite well aware of the Blake ruling that came down and the impact of that. I can tell you that that has had, I guess I'll summarize, the Blake ruling in a nutshell says that if you're going to charge somebody with a possessory crime, you, the crime itself has to have a knowledge element. They had to have, you have to be required to prove that they in some way knew about the item. And so that, that's a very, that's a very simplified version of the, of it. But what that means in Bothell is that possession of drug paraphernalia, as written in our ordinance, would not meet that criteria. Attempted possession of controlled substance without a prescription likely not going to meet that. Some of the drug loitering charges, and depending on which way that it's charged, may meet, may not meet that requirement. And so because of that, there's, the city attorney's office has dismissed a number of the current, of all of the currently pending, or they are in the process of dismissing the currently pending possession of drug paraphernalia charges. To assist them with this process, staff have been providing them with a list of all of the possession of drug paraphernalia cases pending in the court, including those in a bench warrant status. And we've been creating calendars to be able to allow for prosecution and defense to collaborate on addressing all of those cases that are out there. And that, those are administrative calendars, those aren't calendars where individuals are expected to appear. Another case that you probably are not as aware of, that has impacted all of the Courts of Limited Jurisdiction across the state, is the Galinas case. And in that ruling, it, it impacts when a court can issue a warrant for an individual who has not appeared in court. About the same time that came out, the Supreme Court also changed one of the court rules for the Courts of Limited Jurisdiction to address what it means for a defendant to appear and whether or not they actually have to appear or if their attorney can appear on their behalf. So all of those things are impacting us and as far as the functioning of the court. And so along with that, there's also the administrative office of the courts finally concluded a multi-year, I think it's a 15-year project to implement a new case management system. And that's going to be starting here this year. It's going to require a e-filing with the courts. And it, it's a wonderful new system by all accounts. It's going to allow unity amongst the courts and create a substantially more, more communication between the courts. So if an individual files a document in, you know, Bothell, then, and is in Renton, the Renton judge will be able to see the document that's been filed in Bothell, and they'll be, they allow us to have a lot more interactive and collaborative justice. But the effect of all of these decisions has been that I, I had, I completely rewrote the Bothell Municipal Court, local court rules to accommodate all of these new, these new rulings and the new e-filing and just in preparation for what may be coming in the next year. Finally, on cases, these are some of the challenges that the court has faced, in case you haven't figured that out. I imagine that you are also aware of the lawsuit brought against Pierce County by the ACLU. It attacked Pierce County's practice of sending individuals to collection agencies when they did not pay their legal financial obligations. This is a common practice amongst almost all courts. And the ruling from that was not favorable to Pierce County. I have, and I think you're aware, I have always had a policy when I'm talking with individuals about legal financial obligations, to tell them that if they are having an issue with those, to please communicate with the court. I, I literally say, talk to us. If you're having problems and we know you're willing to work with us, we're going to work with you. If I can, I allow people to do community service in lieu of paying legal financial obligations. Our goal is not to be a debtors' court. Our goal is to have consequences for actions that will hopefully lead to discontinuing the action. And so I'm hoping that that will be helpful, but I've also taken steps, and Courtney and I are working on taking the additional steps to ensure that we are complying with the ruling out of Pierce County. And that means creating a new form that, and that we send to individuals before sending them to collections and potentially creating another calendar on our, in our master calendar for individuals who wish to be heard if they are having difficulty paying legal financial obligations. So now that I've gotten through all of that, this is, I'm going to launch into the part that I think you've all been waiting for. Bothell Municipal Court has launched Community Court. We had a stakeholders meeting in May, and I was looking up at my calendar and realized I had the wrong month up, for attorneys, probation, and a number of individuals that represent some coordinators within the community, and talked about who we want to see in there, how we're, how we're going to launch. And because of the way that we're launching, because we're doing this without additional budget, without additional staffing, we're going to launch in three phases. The first phase is people who are already on probation. The people who are already in the probation, they're post-conviction, they're in probation, and we're, we had the probation officers identify the individuals that they thought would benefit from Community Court. And they created a list, and then we went, ran it by the defense attorneys and the prosecutor's office to see if there are any objections and to kind of, to address, are these people really, are these people really the people we want to invite into the program? And then we send out the invitations to those that we did. We are partnering right now with King County, King County District Courts, or King County Virtual Resource Center, because we are virtual. This is one of the benefits, you know, we, we talked about COVID and all the negatives, but this is one of the benefits of COVID, is this creation of this virtual world. Because it means that the Virtual Resource Center is available to us here in Bothell, even though it may be located in Shoreline. And so we're using, and they're very happy to have us use the Virtual Resource Center. Their coordinator is working with Rick and Paige to incorporate into that Resource Center Bothell-specific resources. We, we have a tremendous amount of excitement from stakeholders in the Bothell area, stakeholders that have been working in other courts. So they're, they're more statewide or more area-wide. But we're also seeing a lot of excitement from individuals that we're inviting in that are seeing that, that Bothell is wanting to help them break the cycle. And so we're seeing these individuals say, yeah, I want to try that, I want to do that. We've been working out all of the kinks, but we are truly going live. Our first hearing where, where people have been invited is June 22nd at 1:30. So that's going to be a virtual hearing, it's going to be by Zoom. But we are very excited. We have, obviously we have the in-house classes through our probation services. We have bus passes, hygiene kits, food assistance, clothing assistance in-house, as well as partnering, as I said, with, with King County. We have treatment, social services, treatment center, treatment services, social services. I mean, it's just, it's really exciting. So, okay, back to phase one. It's a 12-month program. Some other courts are doing four-month programs or less. But when we discussed this, we talked about what, what is it going to take? Do we want to be here, we're going to take you and we're going to hand you to, to the various programs that we think you need, and then we're going to just cut you loose? Or do we want, did we want to say, okay, we're going to get you to these programs and we're going to keep working with you as kind of that support mechanism to see that you're actually doing it, that you're actually making it? We're going to be kind of cheerleaders with a hammer. I don't know, how else to describe it, you know? We're there rah rah, but if you step out of line, there's going to be consequences. And we've talked a lot about what those consequences will be. And we're trying to work with, again, we look at the restorative justice, it's not just sending them to jail. In fact, sending them to jail will be one of the last resort type of situations. We're talking about writing essays, we're talking about day reporting, where they get to spend all day sitting in the courtroom with me. Or with probation, that they have to attend different classes, that they have to, you know, do community service hours, work crew, if we can get that established. You know, just kind of stepping up a progressive level of, of consequences, but they will be consequences. And setting goals, every time we meet with them, they will have goals that they will need to complete. So the way that our calendar is and the way that we, we're structured, we're meeting with them once a month, but they're meeting with probation in between then, so that, that we're keeping that once a week kind of contact. It's just they're not meeting with me once a week, they're meeting with me once a month, but they will have weekly roles that they have to check in with probation to do. And we'll see how that works. That's one of the big things that we may need to adjust. And we, it may mean, they may need to have to come back to court more frequently. And so we may have to find, do another redoing of our master calendar, but we're kind of seeing if we can't do it this way. Phase two, we're going to be transitioning who we invite into the program. We're going to be looking at individuals who are current, current active pending cases that have not resolved, they're not on probation yet. We're going to be identifying, using defense counsel and prosecution, identifying individuals that we feel might benefit from Community Court and offering them as kind of, you're going to go this way instead of doing the traditional court and see what, how, and when we can transition them over to that. And then phase three, which is my personal goal, is when we actually have law enforcement on the street, when they are contacting the individual saying, okay, you go to Community Court on Tuesday and I won't book you. Here's your, here's your slip of paper that tells you you have to appear in Community Court. That's when we're really achieving that immediate consequence, that immediate intervention, and truly taking an individual and saying, you need services, and here they are. That's when we, we shorten that gap. But that's going to take a lot to get to that point because that means that my probation officers are going to be handling their probation load and they're not, they're going to have the individuals who are on probation. If I have my probation officers still working Community Court, they're going to be stretched too thin. That's when we're going to need to be talking about with the city about a Community Court coordinator. And that's also probably going to be when we're going to need to be, if not even before then. Phase two and phase three, I think we're going to need to be talking about where this is going to be taking place, about finding a site. And this is, you know, that's, we need to, we're going to be working with, identifying potential funding sources for a Community Court position. I know that there are some resources being offered through the administrative office of the courts. So we're going to be researching that and seeing what we can find for that. And there's also, and I, whether or not that would cover that entirely, you know, working with it, with, with the city, working with you, with budget, and trying to figure out where we want and how we can, we can fund that position. Working with city manager to see what possible sites for the Community Court. I know that we've, we've been talking with, with Aaron and trying to figure out that. And so hopefully that will be something that we can come up with. But we, we heard loud and clear from you that you really wanted a Community Court. And I told you that we could do it without it costing the city any money if we had to, and we're doing it. So thank you. Thank you for the opportunity because this has been a challenge, but it has been a huge opportunity, and I'm super excited. So. Not my usual presentation, not as many squirrels, hopefully. But I'll check with Kelly and see how many she identified at the end. But I really want to close with some inspirational words. I wish they were mine, but they're not. These are words from the winners of the National Center of State Courts 2021 Civics Education Essay Contest. And the first is, they were asked to define what the rule of law is. So the first one is, "The rule of law is like a shield, defending me from unfairness. It makes me feel brave to stand up for my rights and to speak up to help others." That was written by a young woman named Sabina Perez. She's a fourth grader in Fredericksburg, Texas. The next quote was from the winner of the high school level, and it is, "The rule of law preaches the respect that every member of our community deserves. And from it, I have adopted the holistic perspective that each story is a critical integrant, a critical integrant in the design of our nation's uniquely diverse mosaic. Beneath the variance of skin, religion, gender, sexual orientation, and ability, we are one people, united by a shared language of hope and equality." That was Ashley Lynn, a 12th grader in Arcadia, California. So with that, any questions? And before you get into that, I have to say, the, the question that our chief, our retired Chief Justice Fairhurst said, which is, what would you achieve? What would you dare to achieve, I think is how it goes, if you knew you could not fail? So now I'll hear your questions. All right. I see, I think Councilwoman Doer, you had your hand up first, I think, I'm not sure. Go ahead. Should I be the one asking who goes first? Go ahead.
Thank you so much. That was so informative and so inspirational. And just thank you and Courtney for all of your hard work during really difficult and challenging times. I like to think that challenging times creates opportunity, and I, I feel like you, you made the most of that opportunity. I love the efficiency, and I'm wondering if you see going forward ways of working that you picked up during the pandemic that will help create, you know, a permanent efficiencies in the court system? That's my first, I have like five comments, so it's going to take a while.
So yes, I think that one of the things that we noticed, especially, you know, we started this virtual court thing thinking, oh my goodness. And the first reaction was that it would, it, that it would limit access to justice, that individuals who are poor would not be able to do so, would not be able to log in. We have not found that at all. Our, and, and I'm going to maybe force Courtney to say something here, but our attendance rates have been so much better. Courtney, do you have those handy for, for the council?
Good evening, Council. I don't have the exact figure, but we've talked about, about a 20% increase in attendance.
Yeah, I mean, it's huge. And, and people have said to me, because I ask them all the time, because we do offer in-person court also. And so I asked, would you prefer to appear by Zoom or in person? And what I hear is, oh, Zoom, because I got a job, but I couldn't keep the job if I had to keep taking time off to go to court, so please let me do Zoom. I want to do Zoom because I have kids and I don't have anyone to take care of them. I want to do Zoom because I don't have transportation. I mean, it's been huge. And so our Supreme Court is also looking into making this a permanent option. And so that's part of the rules that I included within my new, my rewrite of the Bothell Municipal Court rules was rules on video court. Right now, if we take away the Supreme Court's emergency orders, we're not allowed to do it unless everybody agrees to do it. All the parties have to agree. So that's in my rules right now, that if all the parties agree, we can do that. But I have to say, I can't imagine having realized how much easier it is for people to appear that we're not going to see an agreement, that people, that, that we're not going to have the, the, the bar, the bench, the bar, sorry, the, it's legal terms. We talked about the defense bench and the, and the, and the, or the defense bar and the, and the process, and the state or city bar. They are, they've been, they have been benefiting from this and being able to, to do it. And so we're going to be offering it, but I will tell you, from my perspective, it's exhausting. And from Courtney's perspective, it, it takes, if she's coordinating Zoom, she's not doing a whole lot else. I mean, yes, she is because she's Courtney and so she does 12 things at once. But the reality is that she is tied to her seat, having to monitor and deal with people and, you know, no, sir, sir, please hit the microphone, engage your microphone. Every time, you know, walking people through it. And so it's, and, and God bless her. Sir, you need to be wearing clothing in court. I mean, I could, I have, it's one of those things where, you know, the woman who was about to step into the shower and activated her video for us. Okay, thank you. Oh my Lord. So, you know, things happen on Zoom court that make it, that give us our humor that we need to make it through the day. But it is, it is an exhausting program, process, and it is time consuming. So, um, when we are starting on doing both in-person and Zoom, that balancing that, figuring that out is going to be interesting. I know a number of courts have, um, taken this time to make their courtrooms Zoom-friendly courtrooms. So they have big screen TVs, they have sound systems, they have everything that, that they need within their court so that they can have half the people in the courtroom and half the people appearing by Zoom. And, you know, if your attorney's in the courtroom, but you're appearing by Zoom, being able to coordinate all of that and the logistics that go with that. We are not that far down. We, we don't have all the modern technology and, and everything else. We've done a lot and we're doing really well, but I think that when we start going into the hybrid, we're going to have to see what we can do and what needs to be done to make that work. So that's a long answer to your question, sorry.
Love it. And I agree. There's something called Zoom fatigue for sure. They're, you know, staring into a screen all day can be really exhausting. Um, and I, and I, I just want to take a moment to mention the unsung hero in the pandemic is our IT department.
Oh, absolutely. Yes. They've really worked with us on a number of different things. I really appreciate them. Courtney has, Courtney, I know, was a, was a champion of Zoom from very early on. And so, um, got us into that and worked with them, I know. So that was something that I think was really fun. Um, and brought, and they were, you know, eager to work on it because they wanted that was something, a new challenge for them. So.
So, and I had a couple of questions. So, uh, when you showed the slide on the infractions, is there a way you could go back to that slide? Cause there's something somewhat disturbing, I thought. And that was the DUI numbers.
Yes. We have seen, um, an increase in DUIs.
If I can.
And I think I, I, I have a friend who has a winery in Walla Walla and he says he can't keep wine in because people are sitting at home and the problem comes when they don't stay home.
So, um, I'm looking at the filings. So driving under influence, we're looking at a threefold projected increase of DUI. And then we're for criminal traffic and I don't quite.
This is me doing the projection for 2021. We only have four months in. So the numbers that you see there are the actual numbers and then that's what I project if we keep up at the same pace.
Okay, so it's.
We're going to have at the end.
Not quite double then. It's 57 up to 99 then, if we keep.
From 57 in 2020, right, to 99 projected. So we already have 33 filed in the first four months of 2021.
So what's criminal traffic? Can you give me an example?
Sure. Uh, reckless driving, um, some forms of, well, no, I think they, they made that all infractions. Um, driving under the, or driving while license suspended in the first, second or third degree. Operating motor vehicle with a canceled, uh, title, operating motor vehicle, um, with expired tabs. No, that, I'm sorry, that's an infraction. Operating motor vehicle, um, if you've altered the trip permit, like you get a three-day trip permit and then you alter that, that's criminal. Those are the, the criminal traffic, um, of non-DUI traffic.
So, and then what I'm looking at here in terms of the domestic violence, this, which is something that I'm really, really concerned about having been driven underground in the last year. And maybe this is a question for, uh, the chief, I'm not sure. But when you schedule, um, when you schedule court dates, how do you prioritize? Is it by date or is it by the level of infraction?
Yeah. So the, the overriding, the, the primary concern is that an individual has a constitutional right to a speedy trial. They also have, under the court rules, um, from the Washington State Supreme Court, they have the right, if they are out of custody, to a trial within 90 days of the commencement date, which is usually the arraignment date, or 60 days if they're in custody. So that's, that's the drop dead. We have to adhere to that number regardless of what the charge is. When we come to a, we, we offer jury trials once, one week a month. So during that week, we'll have a number of different cases that are set for trial. When we're prioritizing which cases go during that week, if we're looking at when is the expiration of time for trial? What type of cases we're, we're dealing, is the person in custody, because in custody always gets priority? Is, and, and so in custody would more likely be the domestic violence, the DUI, less likely to be the, the lesser offenses, but not necessarily always. There are many factors that play into that. But you're also looking at the type, if it were a tie, like if we're saying we have five cases going and we have room for, or five days within that week and we have room for two cases and we have a third case that needs to go. If everything else is equal, we're going to prioritize the more serious offense and the offense that has more civilian witnesses as opposed to law enforcement witnesses. So the, the DUIs, the DBs are going to get priority over a driving while license suspended charge. Really don't face that very often though. And partially, I think because our, again, we have an amazing defense and, and prosecution bar because they often work it all out ahead of time. So when it comes to me, they've already figured out which cases are going to go. And so that's, that's very helpful for me. I don't have to make very hard decisions very often on that. But, so that's, that's how we prioritize. But again, I have not yet had to say this case is not going this week and it's going to get bumped to the next one because we're, we don't have room.
Okay. So then of these filings, which ones go to community court?
So, um, we have excluded domestic violence and DUIs.
Okay.
Because, so violent, violent offenses, so domestic violence. And, and that's for the safety of the individuals who are participating and safety of the stakeholders. And DUIs because the, um, although that, the, the individual clearly may need treatment. It's a different circumstance and it's a different concern for the safety of the community. And so, um, we're not sending them to community court either. We, we made that, that decision. So I already have a request for two domestic violence cases to be, um, exceptions to that rule. And that's something that we're going to be discussing on the 22nd. So there'll be a presentation as to why those two should be considered as exceptions.
Interesting. Okay. Well, I've taken up plenty of time. I thank everybody at the council for indulging me. Um, I just want to thank you so much for getting started on community court. It definitely has been a priority for this council and the fact that you were able to do it, um, without a budget and during, um, the pandemic is, is quite something. So, um, it's always a pleasure to, to have you before us and, and you're always inspirational. So thanks so much.
Uh, and I appreciate the comments, but really and truly I would be nowhere on it but for my staff. So.
Courtney.
Courtney.
To your, the rest of your staff as well.
Yes. Yep. So. So I see, um, oh, okay, yes. Uh, Councilor, Deputy Mayor Zornz, you had your card up.
I'll, I'll go, I'll go as quickly as possible. I take notes and, and there was a lot of Courtney, 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 Rick, Courtney in my notes.
Courtney Heather, yeah.
Such, such, you are a fabulous team and, and you're right, it goes beyond the court. You interfaced with the whole city and, and your comments on timeliness and restored, and being restorative, I thought this is what a healthy city is. It just gives the heart hope. This is, this is how we, we're healthy. And I would love at some point to get those, uh, quotes again on, uh, rule of law.
I'd love to share them. They're, they're fantastic. So I will, uh, I'll, I will provide those to Courtney so she can get them over to EL2 for you.
The Blake decision, I, when we, when we toured Olympia, the, then I suspect a number of the people that we saw were people who were brought on things that the Blake decision would not bring in today. And, um, there's, you know, requisite drug testing every time that they came in, which I'm sure is a challenge. But what came with it was also a piece of, let's find you work, let's find you a place to live. All those pieces that I sit there and I think this may be the downside to the Blake decision is people who need those assists in other areas now are going to fall, may fall through the cracks and it's going to be a challenge to make sure they don't.
It's true, but the reality is that, um, the drug addiction often fuels many of the other non-violent crimes that we see, that especially shoplifting.
Right.
Um, and so those individuals are going to be before the court. And as long as, and law enforcement is really good about documenting that they see drug paraphernalia or other things like that in the vehicle. So that we're, so that the prosecution is aware, so the court is aware, this individual has an issue that needs to be addressed and that would be appropriate for community court.
So it wouldn't be something that would be part of their charge, but you could say, this is part of getting you healthy. Great. That's great. Um, and then also at some point, I understand Edmonds has an outstanding program.
Edmonds has a, a program, which is what is part of the way that we came up, up with phase, the first phase here. They do a post, a probation run, um, program that honestly, the judge has very little to do with. So that's kind of our phase one. And it's a little bit pet patterned after that. But that's.
I would love when COVID goes away or, you know, puts itself on the back shelf. I would love to be able to see some of these other programs, just to understand, appreciate what you're doing as well.
Absolutely. And I think that Edmonds is doing their, um, their community quarter, their equivalent uh, program on Zoom, virtual right now. We, we actually met with their probation officer and talked with him about how the program worked just as the, just as we were all getting on Zoom, basically.
Well, thank you for the presentation. Give thanks to all the staff. And, and I took notes on, on, um, your needs and concerns. So, so, so thank you. You guys are.
I just realized that I didn't even do my looking forward, what we were going to be doing in the future. Yeah. And I, I talk about my staff. I, and I, you're right, I've mentioned a number of people repeatedly, but I have two court clerks that if I'm in court with one of them, the other one is fielding all the phone calls, all the people who walk in from the street and trying to maintain her out of court duties. And so, but to respond to that, then this is something I should have told you about, is that we've closed in the afternoon. So the court is, is open to the public from 8:00 AM to 12:30. And then we're closed, um, to the, to walk-ins at least. They still, they can still call in, but they can't walk in anymore. And that's just to allow that one clerk to be able to keep up. And that's, that's a result of, and we, we, I know that you talked about this, um, earlier, but as a result of the layoffs, we had one additional person, which would have made that a lot easier to handle if that person were still around. But again, because of COVID, we adapt and we're able to do that because people understand when you close down in the afternoon. So again, that's one of our goals is to find funding for that position for next year when we are open and having to be open all the time.
Keep doing what you're doing. Thank you. And keep letting us know how we can support you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. All right. I know that, um, Councilmember Thomas, Thompson, you've had your card up a number of times and I keep, you keep just being behind.
I'm not fast enough. I'm learning. This is my first term, so I'm figuring it out. I, it's nice to have somebody else on Team Squirrel here, just so you know. But then you said that 1993 was 30 years ago and I felt attacked. Like, that's a long time, 30 years, my gosh.
It's not quite.
It's, it's getting there though. So I had hair then. I just want to kind of add on to what everybody else has said and make sure that I specify that I'm talking about, uh, you, Courtney and the rest of the staff. To be able to stand up an entirely new initiative in the middle of a pandemic, after staff layoffs with no extra funding or resources is really impressive. Like, thank you, all of you. And I'm specifically saying all of you, so you can't be like, oh, it wasn't me, it was my team, because like, I want you to, you can't push back, take the credit. The, um, and, and not just for the, like sheer competency, but focused around restorative justice. So thank you for competency, but also for priorities. I, I appreciate both of those. There have been a number of questions that I had written down that have been answered and I will not repeat those. But you mentioned trying to, you know, find funding for additional positions when it comes time to go to that phase three where we have a building and, um, do that. I, I was under the impression that we reallocated levy money in our budget last year to be able to support those. I don't know. Can you confirm?
That was talked about, but I don't think that was finally decided on. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but I think that was something that was discussed. That I think there came, became an issue because it was law enforcement focused. And I think that there's been a lot of pushback from the community, if I remember correctly. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you though.
Oh, no, I'm, you didn't. Um, interim city manager, do you remember that?
No, it was, it was before me.
Okay.
We had had some conversations and, you know, I, as the judge mentioned earlier, we, we are currently in conversations about how to, how to sort of crack this nut and how to proceed forward. So I think, um, as a team, we will, we'll figure out something to bring to council perhaps in the, um, mid-by conversation.
I could be remembering this completely wrong, but I seem to distinctly remember voting for that. And, um, as part of the community court discussion in terms of like how we would actually fund it. So if we could, if you could hear me and like, can we, can we figure that out? I guess I could go back and watch the old meetings too. Oh, and for the judge, I had one other question that I guess is kind of unrelated to our conversation, but you mentioned driving with a suspended license as a criminal infraction. And to bring up Edmonds again, um, I, I believe they changed that earlier this year to make it a civil infraction for a few reasons. If we did that, what ramifications would that have for the court?
It's interesting that you say that, um, because I think that that is something that is being discussed at the state legislature level as well. And so, um, the ramifications are I mean, not, quite frankly, not hugely different. It would become an infraction. It would not be a criminal case. People, you know, okay, so I can put them in jail if they don't pay. People, you know, okay, so I can put them in jail if they don't pay, or I can put them in jail if they just keep driving. Is that really what our goal is? Or is our goal to get them relicensed, to get them? And so when we're addressing that, um, the means of addressing it. In the infraction world versus in the criminal world. I don't, I don't see there being a huge difference. The numbers to the court, the numbers as to the time. Um, it's something that, that we could sit down, I think Courtney and I could sit down and break down for you. Because the, the, the costs to the city may be different. The effectiveness of the court may be different, but it, there's a number of different factors that that could come into play. And what I'm thinking of is, if you have an infraction, you don't have a right to an attorney. So there may be, uh, no public offenders assigned. But then if there's no public defender assigned, how do you figure out how to get your license back? You know? So, uh, there's a number of factors there. And so I would, I would be glad to look into that and, um, and discuss that. Um, but I think that it may be a moot issue because I think that our state legislature is pretty intent on, on decriminalizing that.
Doing the same thing. Perfect. Awesome. Thank you again.
Uh, Councilmember McCullough?
Yes, um, first of all, let me say thank you very much to you and your staff. For really working hard, um, on restorative justice. It's very, very top priority for all of us. And, um, I, I did very, very many years ago, um, volunteer for a community court. That we actually had in Bothell. But one of the things that I wanted to ask you about was. What percentage of our youth are we actually serving, um, with the community court? Or is there more plans in the future to serve the young people?
So the, the short answer is my jurisdiction only on criminal matters. Except for criminal driving is eighteen years and older. So I'm not serving a, a large percentage of our youth. Um, in fact, very little. Um, and so that's the short answer. The long answer is, we have been approached, um, um. By, um, retired, retired chief, uh, Simmons, Simmons? I should remember his name.
Uh, Deputy Chief Simmons.
Thank you. Um, he has approached the court to see about, um, potentially creating. A, a youth court that involves criminal matters. And so again, the jurisdiction issue is the big issue. I, I am a, I, my jurisdiction is created by statute. And so if I don't have a jurisdiction over the individual, I'm not sure I can offer community court to the individual. With any sanctions. And so then that becomes an issue of where are we going with the community court? Is this something that we're just making the resource center available, which we have every intention of doing for any of the citizens who want. To participate with that. You don't have to commit a crime to have access to the resource center. Um, I would, I, I don't want to encourage people committing crimes. So from that perspective, so that's, we're looking into that, um, trying to figure out what we can and can't do. But at this point in time, I think our, our hands are fairly tied by our, the restrictions of our jurisdiction.
Thank you. And, um, I really appreciate that. I think that, um, prevention for our youth is really critical. And that if you get them, we can get them help early enough and services. Then we can prevent them from ever having to end up in the, yeah, being on a teenage group, yes.
Yep, I, I very much agree.
Right. So if you, um, if, um. Deputy Chief Simmons, uh, has some ways to do things, we, we probably would want to support that. So let me know.
Will do. Oh, I'm sorry, were you done? Councilmember McCullough, were you done? Okay, Councilmember Agnew, sorry.
You know, I just can't give you the accolades that everybody else has. You guys have done an utterly remarkable job. Of moving and progressing forward with limited resources during a pandemic. I mean, I, it's phenomenal what you guys have done, and I just can't thank you enough. Thank you for being thoughtful. And thank you for helping Bothell be strong. Outstanding work.
Thank you. Um, I will say thank you on behalf of my staff. Um, and hopefully they're watching and hearing what, that, how proud you guys are of them. Because I think, I hope they know how proud I am. But, thank you. Mayor Olson?
So yeah, so thank you very much for the presentation. And thank you and your staff for really getting us started on this community court. Um, and starting us on this, this journey. Um, so I think. When you initially came on, we were all very excited for this. So it's, it's great to be able to see this come to fruition and, and making progress. And, you know, showing that, uh, you know, local government and municipalities can do. Great things and, and be more efficient and, um, just make things work. Um, with the limited resources that we do. So, uh, thank you for working some of that magic. And, and for all of the, the passion that you bring to you, the court and your staff. Um, just making everything work just seemingly that much better.
Oh, Councilmember McNeil, did I see a hand?
Thank you. You know, I just have to say something, but, um, I just echo all the comments that are made, great work. Um, dedication to the community of Bothell and all the hard work and dedication you guys put in, uh, to make us stronger together, working together. So I just want to thank you, uh, on behalf of the community for everything that you guys do, uh, you and all your staff. And I look forward to, uh, all the wonderful things that you're going to do in the future with the, the community court. Thank you.
Appreciate it. So you all know you're invited to, to watch if you want. You can, you can sign into our Zoom court. I know, I, I extend that invitation for any time, but, but it might be really fun to see the community court. Although you may see us stumbling a little bit since it'll be our first time. With that, I think I will turn things back over to you. And, um, thank you very, very much again for your time. I really appreciate that you have opened up these lines of communication. And again, I guess I'll end by saying that I was at a meeting with, um, presiding judges. From around the state, including Chief Justice Gonzalez. And I was able to brag that my court had asked me to do a state of the court. And that was truly applauded by everyone. And Chief Justice Gonzalez told me he wanted a copy of my speech, which really. So thank you all for, for doing that. And thank you for, once again, making me proud to be part of Bothell.
All right. Thank you. Have a great evening. All right. So that brings us to the end of our agenda, and on to council conversations. Councilmember Doer.
I have a list. Um, I wanted to, um, first, uh, talk about Edmonds. Starting, um, a night market. We need to do a, a night market. Um, Councilmember McCullough and I tried a couple of years ago. Um, I've since had conversations with someone from the chamber. And I wanted to know, um, I don't know if we need a subcommittee or what we need to do. But, um, we have a year to plan a Friday or Saturday night market. And I, I think it would be a fabulous to go along with the incubator idea. Uh, there are so many pluses. There are very few night markets. Um, so, and I just imagine a thriving community where our kids have somewhere to go on a Friday night. That's not, you know, getting into trouble and, uh, a place everyone can just say, hey, it's a Friday night market. That's where we're going on Friday night. And, um, one of the thoughts that, um, I was talking to Andrea Ritter from the chamber. One of the thoughts we had was, you know, that, that, um, heads in beds issue with LTAC. And what we were thinking was, if we could have a Friday night market and try to align it with Saturday morning events. Like runs or other things that are already in play in the community. Then we could potentially use some LTAC money to help plan, um, the Friday night market. And I, um, I, I don't know if I've talked about this at, at council. But, um, you know, I, my family's from Taiwan. And, um, when we, when we go to Taiwan, all my kids want to do is go to the night markets. And every town has a night market once a week. And everybody's there, all your neighbors, all your friends. It's a huge social event. There's food, there's laughing, there's, there's so many things to do. And I just think it's just such a great opportunity for our city to come together post pandemic. And do something really wonderful and unique and different. And for Bothell to put kind of its, its, um, name out there as, as, uh, you know, an up and coming community. I mean, we, we led the way with closing down Main Street and having outdoor seating. And I think this is just another opportunity for us to create community, um, in the city of Bothell. And so I was kind of interested to see what everyone else thought about that idea. And how we might be able to, um, as a council, support, support that idea. Um, you know, I, I'm not married to where it is, but, you know, um, I think when Councilmember McCullough and I were talking about it. We, we thought the, um, City Hall Plaza would be great because we could open the, the building. And there could, you know, there'd be a restroom right there. And, you know, it could be, I don't know. We initially thought maybe the afternoon, there's like fruit, fruits and vegetables and like a farmer's market. And then it gets, goes into the evening and maybe we close down Festival Street and, and use Councilmember, uh. McNeil's idea about food, food trucks. I mean, it just could be something really, really fabulous. And so, um, anyway, I bring that idea to you. Uh, and I'd just love to know, maybe we could get Jeannie Ash involved if she has time. Uh, I think it could be really, really fabulous. So, and music, we could also include music. So I just thought I'd bring this to you and, and see how, um, other people felt about that idea. And I just wanted to get it started early because it's always, it's always early until it's too late.
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
I feel like, uh, out of Shrek, ooh, ooh, pick me, pick me. Because every time, I think you mentioned this a cou- I think you mentioned this when I came on council. And every time I go by Bothell Landing, I picture, you know, strung lights, um, at summertime. And I think, if I'm not mistaken, we're going to be talking about some more realistic planning for Bothell Landing. And, you know, maybe that should be in that discussion. But yes, no, I would, I would love the idea. And I would be down there with all the young people having a blast. So. And looking for you guys, but not making a quorum. So, um, um, but yes, no, I love, let's keep that discussion going. I think, you know, let's not dwell about it. So there's my two bits.
Councilmember Thompson? And I'm going to take this time to give my plug for the idea that if, uh, this, last year. We were supposed to have the farmer's market, um, you know, right, uh, behind Main Street in that parking lot. And at the same time, we were going to do music in the park. And we were going to have bands bring three hundred to a thousand people to an empty business park on a Friday night. What if we did music in the plaza at the same time as the night market? Incorporate Councilmember McNeil's idea, bring some food trucks in, close down Festival Street. And like make Bothell a really cool place to be on a Friday night. And we can start planning this now for next year. And, you know, as we come out of a pandemic, we can give our community something really special, something really cool. Um, I, I really enjoyed, uh, how you talked about Taiwan in the night markets. Um, when I was just out of college, I spent a little bit of time in the south of Spain. And all of those cities, uh, have a big town square, big plaza in the middle of it. And each city has one night a week where the whole community just goes to the plaza. And they just hang out. They play music, they play games, like, it's just this cool community. There's grandparents, there's grandkids. And everybody knows that's where you go on a Friday night, is there's cool stuff to do and everybody hangs out. And I would love to recreate something like that here. I think that would be really powerful. And man, wouldn't it be cool if we could get some of the neat things that other places do? That we all go on vacation and we think it's really cool that it happens when we go on vacation, but we could do that here too. So I'm all in for a night market. My only request would be like, let's bring music in the park down to downtown. And like, let's just have downtown be rocking. I think it'd be a blast. Oh, um, and you brought up, um. Nope, never mind. That was the same topic. Councilmember McCullough?
Thank you. And thank you, Councilman Doer, for bringing this up. It's really important. And I would love to see a Friday night market. I also like to see it celebrate different cultures. So that we have our Korean families or our Japanese families. Or, um, different cultures also celebrate their music, their dance, whatever they can bring us. So that we can appreciate them. Um, as a founder of Bothell's Fri- uh, Fri- Friday Market, I'm going to tell you. You've got to have the money to hire a manager. That's the only one key. You can do a lot with volunteers, but somebody is a huge job to manage this market. And I loved it, but yeah, that's the one key. And I also will say that, uh, music in the park, we always wanted to incorporate that as well. And I agree with Councilmember Thompson, but you draw so many people, it's thousands. And we used to do it at the Park of Bothell Landing, which was wonderful, but it can't accommodate the numbers anymore. So that's another, you know, thought about how we make that happen. I, great idea, but it is difficult. Those are the issues that I, but I want to help you every way I can because I love the idea.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yeah, I, I think it's an amazing opportunity and idea. So I'm very supportive of that as well. Just how do we plan it, who plans it, et cetera? But I think it's a huge opportunity to bring community, get community back together. Um, so I, I do support that. Um, the one, uh, there's two things that I wanted to bring up real quick. Uh, one is, uh, Councilmember Doer brought up, uh, the data, data information. Um, and I do think that that's something we should look at, but I think we should look at it when we have time and, and let staff bring it back to us. Um, so I was supportive of getting the information, but want to make sure that we're not overloading or burdening the staff of what their current workload is. Um, but I am supportive of, of that when they've got time. And the other thing I wanted to bring up is I'm noticing, you know, a lot of the regional meetings that I attend and talking to other leaders around the region. Um, and we've gotten several, a couple of emails here, most recently about the pride, uh, flag. Um, and I wanted to see, um, if the council is supportive of, of doing something like that. I think it's important that, but having these proclamations, um, for the different, um, supporting our different community members. Um, I think it's important that we support all community members and find ways to do that. And I know that other cities are doing it regionally. So I'd like to see if the, uh, other council members are in support of, of doing that. And maybe see, uh, how we can actually make that happen.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yeah, I'd be definitely in support of the, uh, Friday night lights. So we'd have to coincide it when there's no football game. I just want to bring that to everybody's attention. And I'd also be supportive of the pride flag.
Yeah, I think a Friday night market is, is great. I was, you know, excited when it was happening over kind of in the Beardsley. And then when it was going to come into the downtown area, that seemed like a great idea. And just energizing our downtown more. So when COVID kind of derailed that for, uh. Just derailed it. Um, I just, yeah, that was unfortunate. And yeah, if we can, as everything's opening up, start looking at how we can reengage with that. Find some people to spearhead it. And like Councilmember McCullough said, you know, it. It took a lot of planning and a lot of just, uh, a couple of people putting a lot of time into it. So finding those people that can spearhead it, uh, and devote that time and energy. I think is, is critical to that being a success. And yeah, I think, uh, doing the, the pride flag, uh, and supporting the proclamation that we made. You know, makes sense.
Councilmember Doer?
Thank you. I'm so excited. That makes seven of us who are, who are interested. So hopefully we can work with staff to figure out, um, first steps or what, what kind of support we need. Uh, I think it could be a great business incubator. Um, so maybe Jeannie Ash could work on it. Uh, I wanted to also.
So maybe Jeannie Ash could work on it. I wanted to also endorse the pride flag idea. And then I had a request. As you may remember, last year, there was a very important vote on fireworks ban, and I missed that vote for one of the only reasons I would miss a vote, because my son was graduating that night. And I just couldn't see a way to skip that, to vote for the fireworks ban. And so I'm asking if there are enough of us in support to revisit that, I would very much like to be able to vote on that issue, and I I think it was close enough that it, it bears potential revisit. And so I'm, I'm asking if there are any other people that would be in support of, of looking at the fireworks ban in some capacity in, in the future, in the next few months.
Councilmember Agnew.
You don't have to ask me twice.
I'd say in the next month before the Fourth of July this year, because we can't touch it for this year, but we should do it for next year.
Deputy Mayor Zornz.
I was going to say, you guys are bringing up too many topics. I can't get, come back and get full circle. So while I'm thinking in order, flags, go look at all our resolutions and inventory what those flags should be, because it's not just pride, there's some others that we should be including. So I'm just putting that out there. Because there's other populations who, who would like to be recognized, and I think that would be a, the fair and right thing to do. And then, oh, doggone it, so many things. Fireworks. I, I think that we were, that, yes, we were talking about what modifications pursuing that, you know, can we dial it down to what do they call it, non-proccusive fireworks? So there's that. So yes, more conversation on that. And then this is for Councilmember Doer. Because finding out what the impact is on moving sales out on, in the parking areas, what did, what, what did we realize on that? How far down do you want to drill? So like, if we ask our interim city manager to drill down, is there basic information that you want? So why I'm asking is if we can't do full comprehensive, but we can get a big picture, would you be okay with that?
Yeah, I'm with whatever staff thinks, you know, the, the most bang for their buck in terms of time spent. I just, it's worth being a little more data-driven when we make decisions, and this is a really great opportunity to kind of look at the impact of the decision and why wouldn't we want to see the data?
Oh, no, I agree.
No, I don't need a, I don't need spreadsheets upon spreadsheets. I just, just a rough idea. Does it pay for itself? And then some are, you know, just, just kind of a general idea of the economic impact of having.
Okay, I'm on that. I'm on this, I'm on the same page. So, yes, just getting a, a good, a reliable enough indication of what, what happened when we did this. So, great. I, I, but I didn't, I didn't want to assume that that's where you were going without asking you. So anyway, thank you.
Well, and, and what I was thinking, but when I mentioned like shopping in Woodinville, it's not because I want to shop in Woodinville, but if you look at what they have available, I look at they have an Old Navy and an Ulta, and, and shops that are not available in Boffel. And I just, I just think, wow. You know, I look at the QFC Plaza and think there, there could be an opportunity there, right, to kind of redevelop that or, or upgrade it to have more of the retail that brings in money for the city. I, you know, there's a nail shop, and there's a secondhand store, and there's, you know, a tanning bed place, but I don't imagine a ton of money is made there. And also, right aid, there's an antique store. So those to me seem like lost retail opportunities that could bring, be bringing in money into Boffel, and that's why I brought up having a broader discussion about our land use and our retail and how we how do we incentivize that sort of redevelopment? So that people do their shopping in Boffel and not Woodinville. I think personally, Boffel is better. We have a gorgeous main street. We, we're more of a centralized community. I just don't know that we're capitalizing on it as much as we could. And at the same time, it seems like even though we have retail requirements in downtown, we're not, we're having trouble getting them. You know, we have a massage parlor with a storefront. And so I would like to understand better why we're not getting that kind of retail that they're getting in, in Woodinville. And if there are code changes that we need to make, let's talk about it. But let's at least make decisions by confronting them head-on rather than just kind of living with what we have, I guess.
Yeah, no, I, 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 I totally, I totally agree. And, you know, as downtown was being redeveloped, there was lost retail opportunities that we probably won't get back in the near future. And, and thank you for mentioning across the street from QFC, because that just makes sense to make that just a, a nice expansive encompassing area where people can come in and do their shopping.
Yeah, I just, I guess I'm just hoping for us to shift to more of an intentional agenda rather than a reactive agenda. And I just feel like we're kind of in, and maybe it's, maybe it goes back to staff and having enough staff. But it sure feels like this would be a really good moment before we sell and clean up and sell the remaining lots to really revisit the decisions we've made and be a little more proactive about what we want. And that might be that we need to be a little more intentional in looking at changes that we can make. Because once those are sold, the horse is out of the barn.
Councilmember McCullough.
Thank you. So this is quite a discussion, and I'm going to just share with you some of my concerns about this discussion. It needs to be a broader group, actually, that talks about what we want in Boffel. But Boffel's been kind of unique in its own way. I've worked a lot to bring small boutiques to Boffel, and, and I brought Piper in, and the wedding shop was one that I worked with, and logs that Ulta bring in. You have to think about where do you want to be a boutique community? Where do you want big retail? You don't want too close to Main Street, because what you're going to do is you're going to hurt your little business people, the small businesses. The food truck idea is a great idea, but what are you going to do on a Friday night when your restaurants are going, losing customers to go to a food truck? So this takes a bigger conversation. The other part of this that I think is interesting is the president of Cascadia Community College, Eric, said, you have to be a college town. Our students want fast food. They want to grab something and go. They want to come to Main Street. There's nothing there for them. So this is a great conversation. I think it's one that we really need to have. And we need to do it with our chamber and with our small businesses, so we can be sure that they're involved in supporting them as well.
Councilmember McNeil.
Thank you. Yeah, and I agree with Councilmember McCullough. I think it's a much broader conversation. The food truck idea and the questions that I was asking is, where are the opportunities in parking lots, and how can we get more people to come with, into the city of Boffel for various reasons, and, and food trucks is just one of the things as we're talking through that, that, that came to mind. But I do not want to detract from our businesses that are already there. I want to make sure that we help boost and get more people coming down and whining and dining. I wanted to drop back in on Councilmember Doer's brought up the, the fireworks, and we had a, a pretty robust conversation around fireworks and I wanted to, when we had that conversation, I wanted to take my personal beliefs out of it because I grew up lighting off fireworks as a kid. And, you know, many people in, in the Boffel area light off fireworks. But I think what's, what, what I always come back to is the fact that when we discussed it originally, when I first became a council member, we decided to put it out to an advisory vote. And the community spoke about whether or not they wanted to have fireworks. Does that mean they're experts on it? No. But they did speak. And one of the things that we often talk about is how do we get our community members to engage in what's important to them? And so to me, I think, well, if we're willing to, if we're willing to say, let's put it out to them, we get their opinion, and their opinion is they want to keep them. And then a few years later, we decide to take it away from them without going back to them, that just concerns me. And so, not, not that that's right or wrong, I'm just saying that it's something that needs to be engaged in the conversation, is the community did speak on something and, and has something changed? Should we go back out? Should we take a poll and see where they are? Well, that, that costs money, right? Do we have the money to do that now? So to me, I just, I'm torn because I don't want to, to ask the community to engage, and then once they do engage on something, remove their voice from it without going back to them on it. But this is, this is an important topic, right? I mean, there's a lot of people that are affected by fireworks. You know, there's, you know, property loss, there's human, you know, anxiety and, and PTSD and things like that that are, you know, it's, you know, animals. There's a lot to talk about. But again, if, you know, I just feel torn because I feel like if, if I make the decision to take something away from the community that said they want it, what, what is the downside? What are we, what are we saying as, as a council that we're, we want their opinion, but then we're not going to listen to it? And I'm not saying that's what we're doing. I'm just saying that that's kind of where I'm, I'm torn. So I just, I think it's worth having a conversation. But I think it's important that we make sure that the conversation includes what the community asked for when they took the advisory vote.
Councilmember Thompson.
Yeah, I agree with Councilmember McNeil, and I think it's we should have the conversation, and we should talk it through. We should just, just have a chance to have that conversation in front of the community so that they can all see what we're, what we think, what we're talking about, and how we're making our decision. And I think that makes five people that have said that they'd like to have that conversation. And I'm hopeful we could have that, you know, before the Fourth of July, because we have a pretty arbitrary deadline there. In terms of the downtown, you know, when we were looking at the hotel on the four active use acres, we were told that a hotel actually would, like another hotel would turn, turn it into more of a hotel district and make it more of a destination that would actually like bring more people in, kind of the rising tide lifts all ships. One of the things that I particularly like about music in the park is that it does bring a lot of people downtown. It does bring a lot of people in to walk around and support our businesses that are downtown. You know, we don't have businesses in the office park in North Creek. We have businesses downtown. And if we bring 300 to 1,000 people roughly, depending on which band they have playing downtown, that's a whole lot of people that can buy food at a food truck, and still plenty of people left over to spend money at the restaurants. So when we, when we create that vibrancy, when we create that destination, more people come. And the rising tide lifts all ships. So I wanted to point that out. I'm looking forward to seeing when the fireworks discussion comes up on the schedule. And I think that's it.
Councilmember Doer.
You know what I'm going to say? If anyone wants to speak, raise your hand now, or I'm going to motion that we adjourn.
Second. If we need it.
Councilmember McCullough.
No, I'm just trying to leave.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great night.